I mean, not many, but like a area. I asked you, like, I know.
The study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, in room one thirty-seven of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site, and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent Pecquell, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Treasurer Hook.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Clerk Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Director Whitehorn.
Here.
Vice Chair Whitehorn.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two point one is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/Asimble. Item three point one is a focus topic, School Continuous Improvement Plans Process 2.0. Superintendent Pecquell.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I am going to be very brief, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Peter Ruck, who you all know as our Director of Research and Improvement, and Gretchen Acasio, who is our Coordinator of Project Management. As Peter and Gretchen have taken the lead in doing an analysis of our current skip process, or School Continuous Improvement Process. As you can see on the title slide there, we're talking about the future of that process in two phases. First, what we're calling 2.0 beta, which will be the process that we put in place for the upcoming school year, the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year, and then the full 2.0 version of the process. And the reason for those two phases is that this is going to be a major shift for our schools in a really fundamental way from the process that we've been operating on for the last several years, which I will call 1.0. We have, I think, effectively built the core infrastructure for continuous improvement planning. But to date, it has largely been using initiatives and priorities that we have set from the central office level. And the big shift, which is very much in concert with the shift in our budget model that you approved last week, is to be providing our sites with more support and more guidance in setting their priorities based on rigorous needs assessment that we will be working very hard to provide them with as part of the new process. So if we can go to the next slide, this slide is the only slide you're going to hear from me on this evening, but it's the one that I think I tried to put into a single visual the core components of the process as we're going to be moving it forward. At the top will be a limited number of performance measures that will be unique to each level of our system, specifically elementary, middle, and high school. And those will be performance measures that I'll be asking you to approve as the Board, and we will be bringing a draft of them to you in the coming months. And they'll be common because those are the aspirations and objectives that we have for all kids in our system. And so that'll be a very important board-level decision. They will certainly be indicators of student outcomes, but they'll also be indicators of school environments and staff well-being and efficacy. So that's the top of the system. The place where school discretion takes a heightened role in our 2.0 beta and 2.0 skip processes compared to the current one is at that next level. Right now, we have set improvement goals at the system level of statistical significance across the board, and we have largely determined the improvement initiatives, like implementing multi-tiered systems of support in literacy, or deeper learning, or mental health, at the system level. In this new system, the sites will set their improvement goal, which is to say, how much, over a three-year period, do they believe they can and should improve on those performance measures, those success measures that I'll be asking you as a Board to grapple with and ultimately approve? Then, sites will also be setting what we're calling their improvement initiatives, the priorities curricularly, instructionally, in terms of student behavior and supports, that they believe will take them toward achieving that goal. Now, they'll have a lot of support in doing that, and in some of the discussions I've had, especially since the balanced budget model discussion began, one of the messages I got from some of our most thoughtful principal was, yes, we need the flexibility to meet needs of kids in our schools, but we want coherence across the system, and we don't want to reinvent the wheel, school to school to school. So in that improvement initiative bucket, the skip teams in our buildings will determine those initiatives, but they'll have a lot of district support. There will certainly be some that are district-wide initiatives, where we'll say this is going to be something that we're all undertaking as a system, based on data or based on priorities that the Board will set. And then frankly, if we have a school that is struggling, that either has got low outcomes on those performance measures, or declining outcomes, or both, there are situations there where we also will step in and be more directive in the improvement initiatives that they will need to adopt. And then, of course, you go down to the action step level. That's right now where our schools have discretion in skip 1.0, is determining the action steps. Everything above that is largely what we have determined for them in our current system. The virtue of that has been, it has gotten us underway, it has gotten us out of the habit of a school improvement plan being something that somebody sends in in October and nobody ever looks at. I think skips are very much living documents in Rochester Public Schools right now, and the skip teams are not everywhere equally, but are increasingly centers of gravity for improvement issues in our schools. But this is the work that lies ahead of us. It's the next step. And then, at the final point, is a progress indicator that is a measure that can help the school figure out how well it's progressing toward those performance measures. So to tie the bottom of the graphic to the top, if the performance measure is on-time high school graduation in four years, a very valuable progress indicator is the percentage of kids in ninth grade who fail to earn a credit in a course. Because we know that when a new high school student misses a credit, it can have catastrophic implications for their progress through school, and that intervening early with those students can make a huge difference over time in the graduation rate. So that's an example of a performance indicator that would be tied to that big-picture goal, four years later, of on-time graduation. So that's a glimpse of where we're headed, and as you can see at the bottom of the slide, kind of buried there because I couldn't manage to fit it in graphically, it notes that the balanced budget model that you approved last week will be particularly focused on resourcing the improvement goals, and the improvement initiatives and the action steps. That's the budget piece of this puzzle. And so John and Andy and the finance team will be working a lot with the improvement team to make that connection, an explicit one, as we build out this new system. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter and Gretchen to share what they learned as they engaged in a pretty rigorous self-assessment of our 1.0 school improvement process. And thanks for all that work.
Good evening. So this evening, we'll run through some details of the feedback that we got from principals during the interviews that we did in two different waves, and we'll run through some of the basics of the proposed new structure that we are refining. So the evaluation of our current skip 1.0 process started with staff feedback and principal feedback that Gretchen carefully constructed this fall. Turn it over to you to describe.
So the the interview process for the site leaders really focused in on the principals, and those principals being essentially the chair of the skip team at each of those sites. The sessions were one-on-one intentionally so that we could have detailed and candid conversations about what was working, what wasn't working, and any ideas for improvement with what they've experienced either at their site or their previous sites in the skip process within our district. We wanted to focus on also challenges and opportunities for the future so that we could make sure we were addressing some of the common issues or challenges that we were seeing across sites, but also making sure that we were aware of what was working and preserving those elements of the process and building upon them. So not losing or throwing everything out with a brand-new process. The scope of that was across all other buildings. So wave one, we had approximately thirty-one interviews with the principals and the APs. We had a second wave that Peter orchestrated in the last six or so weeks. And then, those conversations lasted anywhere from forty-five minutes to a full hour. And it really did allow us to get into the specifics of the site's experience with the skip process, what their needs were, and what we could do to support them through this new process architecture. So summary of that wave one feedback, which was the site leaders that I conducted last summer into the fall, it really emerged as five different common themes. The first one being that some of our complexities within our district, both in the central office and how we're architected through to the sites, was posing as a challenge for the sites to really propel their sites forward on progress to their goals. The second being unclear progress tracking and definition of success. So while the goals and the initiatives and the action steps were quite thoughtful, there's opportunity there to really connect them to a way to see that there's progress happening and really tying those actions and mechanisms through to something that can be assessed on its level of success. The third was inflexibility hindering the progress. And so this kind of touches on the balanced budget model. It touches somewhat on how we were defining our goals from a central standpoint and having the sites actually just comply with that and attach their own action steps. That was creating difficulty in being able to pivot or being able to adjust the plan to the uniqueness of their sites. So that was a common theme that we found, limited data literacy and the mastery of our data tools. It was very clear across the district that there is an embracing of evidence-based decision-making and looking at data to really inform the instructional practices, inform the improvement process. But there was more opportunity for supports in understanding how to evaluate the data and really mastering the tools for data evaluation.
We saw a similar thing, too, in schools' use of current research, a real desire to do so, but not always the best sense of where to start or how to conduct that.
The fifth theme that emerged across the sites was the challenges in our schedules, both including how we orchestrate things across staff and teams, but also even with our district calendar in being able to find time to focus on skip and some of the deep work that has to happen in that planning, to really be able to propel the sites forward and embed that practice into the school year as opposed to just focusing on the planning and then sometimes having that be a little bit stagnant throughout the year. So those were the things that we were really paying attention to as we were looking to re-architect some of our skip processes. You may go into detail on these. So if you're interested in reading, this does dive into each one of those themes a little bit more constructively and tactically to highlight some of the things that we identified as opportunities or areas that we could focus to empower our sites a little bit more. So I'll skip through these.
During this process, while we're gathering all this feedback, we were also doing a fair amount of research on current best practices, process efficiency type of stuff that exists outside of public education that could inform some of our work, and drawing that into the process alongside getting this feedback. And some consistent themes for areas of improvement emerged.
Yes, and to build on what Peter just noted, we did take a look at a number of different frameworks that were successfully used in the United States. We also looked at some of our neighboring districts. Lakeville was one example that used the MTSS process as their framework for continuous improvement. So we looked at how they implemented that, we looked at their indicators, what their cadence was, and we wanted to be very intentional in how we selected it and how we matched our district size and our needs with some of those tools and frameworks that were already out there. What we determined through this process is that our district could benefit mostly from streamlined communication and collaboration. And this is interdepartmental within Central, as well as collaboration between our central supporting departments and each of the sites. Increased autonomy at the sites, and that's really to expand it beyond the action steps and allow the sites to tailor their initiatives to really focus in on the uniqueness of their site and the challenges that they are seeing as it relates to the overall goals that Central Office is guiding them in.
And at the same time, sites were very specific that they really actually appreciated some of the structure in the existing skip 1.0 process. They liked having goals focused for them. They liked having some of the initiatives identified, even if there was some autonomy in choosing which initiatives to undertake, so that it wasn't so Wild Westy, and they still could come to, you know, get expert support from all of us when necessary. We really didn't find that there were any schools in particular that wanted to, like, have complete autonomy on the process.
Yeah, and there's a fine balance. Some sites were much more advanced in their processes and their ability to execute on their goals and their initiatives. And for that, they were actually looking for more autonomy, to be able to do stretch goals or to be able to configure their resources a little bit more for what they were seeing. And then there are some sites that were maybe not so far along on that spectrum or that trajectory, where they did appreciate the extra guidance and the extra expertise on initiatives or resources available for them to reach some of those goals. So we did see kind of a spectrum of sites and where they were as far as like process maturity. And so we wanted to make sure that what we introduce would work for all of those different types. Better alignment of goals. This has kind of multiple meanings here. One is some cohesiveness across the district because sites indicated that they wanted to be able to work with other sites who may be facing some of the similar challenges and to be able to implement best practices or adapt initiatives that other sites have seen as successful.
Basically, they were wondering, you know, what's the roll-up? How do I look at what other places are doing that I could then build off of or make home calls or whatever it is?
And then the other layer of the alignment with goals is very much the balanced budget model and being able to align their goals to the resources and being able to make decisions on some of their program planning with the ability to influence some of the budgetary decisions or the resource allocation to help them get there. As the process 1.0 currently stands, the skip process was happening very much after the budgeting process was happening in the school year and the fiscal year. And so blending those two things together and aligning them a little bit better to have some of those decision points and levers at their availability was one of the other opportunities that we found. And then finally, more effective engagement. And this is strategies to maintain the staff enthusiasm beyond just the planning sessions. There's participation in the skip planning retreats that is met with a lot of enthusiasm by the staff that are participating. But then, once the school year starts, we want to maintain that momentum and enthusiasm, closing the loop on feedback channels, making sure that we're incorporating what we're learning along the way throughout the year in our plans and being more responsive than just an annual look at what's happening and what the outcomes are. And so those were the things that we wanted to focus on as we built up this process for 2.0.
Some standout observations that are quotes from our leaders, if you're interested in reading them.
Some of the takeaways here is that everybody, for the most part, thought that what we were doing currently was making some very positive impacts, but there was definitely opportunity to streamline, opportunity to build upon, and to formalize. And so that was one of the unique things that we came away with, is that we didn't have to start over, which was good news. So in summary of this process evaluation, we did come away with kind of our charge to improve the framework, to implement some additional supports and tools from where we are now. And instead of starting over, we are able to build on what is currently there and implement it with much more intention and migrate the process to be one that allows us to have roll-ups, to be much more data-centric, and to embed the skip process throughout the school year. Slow on the clicker. One other side note I wanted to point out here as we went through this process is it became clear that our district is in a transformation process. And looking at other industries, I equate it to a digital transformation. This is not a graphic that I created. This is Harvard Business. It's the cycle of digital transformation. But based on these interviews, based on the analysis that we did and the evaluation of other districts and tools, we determined that we're somewhere between number two, which is data, and number three, which is insights. And through this skip 2.0, we really do want to transition our district through, all the way to number five, so that we've made that entire digital transformation and embedded that in our three-year cycle of our skip goal planning and our annual and mini-cycle of adjusting and being informed by the data. So I just wanted to highlight that in a formal digital transformation diagram. So as we look at the process improvements, we want to focus on a few areas to really build in process. Central to that is directing our goals centrally, but providing the school sites the ability to develop their initiatives, action steps, and timelines, as I mentioned, to much more match their culture, their uniqueness, the challenges that they're seeing, whether it's with their systems or with outcomes. Through that, we are proposing to embed data practices. And this is really looking at the seasonality of some of the data that comes to us, the screening windows, the surveys that we get from staff, the surveys that we get from families, from students, looking when those results come in and building our skip process throughout the year to allow us to use that data near real time when those results come in to inform either a pivot to our goal or have it validate the direction that we're moving. And so looking at that much, much more frequently and with a seasonality of the data that's available.
And in some cases, it's the other way around. Like, we will probably move when we do our major survey from October until after the holidays with this new process. It's a little better aligned with the process itself, and that's not a calendar we're locked into, so we can define.
Additionally, we're looking to streamline our operational calendar and our hierarchy into a cadence and a structure that better aligns with the budgeting model so that the site leaders have those levers of adjusting resources or identifying resources that can help support their goals and their momentum towards those goals. But also working in concert with the timing of like our surveys and then also looking at our title application process. There's some economies and some efficiencies that we can gain by adjusting the timing and the cadence and the calendar of those two separate processes to work together in that our title schools will be able to leverage the skip improvement goals to fuel those programs, to attach the programming and the title requirements to those dollars. And so it's aligning those as well.
It's also designed to be a little bit of two birds with one. This process can meet both the title need and the skip need simultaneously without doing two different processes at the same time.
Skipping the opportunity to adjust resources, because we've talked about that. But the platform for skip flexibility throughout the year, the three-year goal is one that allows sites to focus for a longer term on meeting certain objectives or metrics. There is a need to still have small cycles within there so that we're not tied to a single goal three years from now, and suddenly our environment has changed, perhaps our challenges that we experience in a specific site have changed, our outcome data is coming in and being different than we expected. We want to have the opportunity to adjust. We want to have the opportunity to adjust and have small cycles to evaluate that and either replan or refine those goals and initiatives on a, a much more smaller scale. So introducing much more frequent check-ins as it relates to the, the targets. And then finally, formalizing and further embedding data and our resource commitments and, and making sure that we have more than one, one opportunity a year to make adjustments based on that as well. So if we need to adjust resources mid-year, we don't have to wait an entire year for a budget cycle. We may have some levers and some opportunities to, to change some, some of our programming to have bigger impacts earlier than our annual goal and outcomes review. So those are the things that we're really focusing on introducing or building upon as we move towards skip 2.0. And so all of our, our tools, our processes and our communication streams that we're looking to implement are really going to solve for these things and introduce these in a, in a larger capacity.
The graphic that's small and hard to read, but it looks good.
So I'll just briefly touch on this, and there may be questions that come up, but this graphic was introduced in the balanced budget model and I've, I've adjusted it a bit, but if, just to explain how to read it, the rainbow dial in the middle is our calendar, an annual calendar. You can read it clockwise. Previous version was counterclockwise, which I realized.
Which made my head explode.
I'm the only one who thinks of it that way, so it is now clockwise. So we're looking at the calendar, the inner circle, which is the grayscale, is our, our budget calendar and the seasons of that. The red center, or the red outer circle is our title application process and programming. And then the very outer circle, which is blue, is the proposed skip alignment to all of those things. So programmatically, moving the dial so that these things align because historically they have not aligned and so we've been out of sync with when we can make decisions and when we can make adjustments. And then you'll see the little triangles around the outside, though those are some key data seasons for our district. And so we want to use those as our guide to try to structure some of our skip check-ins, some of our progress monitoring and our opportunities to pivot on a goal or resource planning around those times so that they're evidence-based and they're data-informed. This is just a slide of that unrolled for those of you who like to view things a little more linear, linearly, but you'll see they all, they all kind of converge at that middle line, which is our fiscal year change. So the planning is really happening January through June and is in concert with each other.
Selection of the sources that we drew upon.
We did highlight a few. One is the nine characteristics of, of a successful school. This was a model or a framework that got a lot of attention. It came out of Washington State and it, I know that it's also in MDE's repository of some of the frameworks that they, that they point out. Five Essentials is another one. That comes out of Chicago Public Schools. And then Illinois actually adopted that across all of the schools in Illinois. It is another framework for evaluating the climate of change and what's going to make the, the school improvement successful. So we really studied that pretty extensively as it related to what we were looking for. And then just looking at some other general process improvement references that, that I thought were particularly interesting as they related to A through 12 education. And then, of course, my own personal experience being in process in corporate America for a good 25 years.
That concludes our brief quote-unquote summary.
Well, board members, this is a study session where we get to ask questions, make comments, ponder. Does anybody want to start? Dr. Cook.
In the either circular or linear overview of all these timelines and how they relate to each other, why, why are there two different prep and plan periods for the skip planning? That's probably something fundamental that I missed, but.
Oh, sure. That's because there are two different skip planning days that the schools, right now they have two days that they dedicate to this, one in June and one in late summer. So what this is, is it's noting that those dates will now occur, one in February and one in May-ish. So it's, it's prepping for the skip planning is the skip meeting and then holding.
The, the intention behind that is to have preliminary planning when some of the preliminary budgeting allocations come out and, and what site budgets could be, as well as when some of the key needs assessment data becomes available from surveys, assessments, et cetera. So that would kind of prime the initial planning. And then that plan would be revisited after the budget settle for the next fiscal year. After some of the, the final data and assessment information becomes available, the sites would get back together with their skip teams, review that, that available information and then solidify their plans and, and have a much more targeted conversation about action steps and implementation.
One of the common items of feedback that we got is that having the first initial skip day and planning retreat or whatever you want to call it in February, so it supports the staffing and, and finance component was great, but that later date was still going to be necessary because a lot happens between February and June. And so they were going to want to have the additional day later to still be able to refine, revisit, make sure it all makes sense. By then, the budget's at, at, so two separate days.
Can I, I think what you're asking though, actually, is if you look, if you look in January and February, there's skip prep that hovers over January and then skip planning that hovers over February.
Thank you for that clarification. Is that, is that?
And then it's the same thing in April and May.
Yes.
Prep and planning. Is that what you're asking for? Like, why is there prep and plan together and then prep and plan? Like, what's the difference?
It is. And it, it sounds like we're kind of getting at it, but yeah, that, that's, that was what I was wondering about.
Yeah.
Two skip retreat days.
Yep.
Yeah, two skip and treat days. There's really two, two phases. The skip prep, which is happening before the skip planning, is the district's opportunity to do some of the needs assessment work and preliminary data collection with the intent to provide the sites each with like a data packet. So what are the survey results that we're seeing coming in? What are the assessment results coming in? Getting that information together to really inform the planning that the sites do when they get their skip teams together. So that would happen in January as a prep. And then again, towards the end of the year in prep for those site sessions.
So it's the district is prepping first so that the sites can do their planning second.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mona.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Director Cook?
Yeah, thank you.
Wow. This presentation is really valuable and really impressive. Five of us were at a school last week for a skip visit and full disclosure, it was last Thursday, I didn't read this before I went, but the principal there was saying just this, that the skip structure is really useful because it gives us that structure that we needed. And she said the, the one thing that they were challenged with is that sometimes their staff was ready to move faster, sometimes they needed more time. And so that, that probably varied from school to school. And I am so impressed that rather than just showing up and saying, you know what, we got it done and if schools aren't keeping up, they'd better just do the same thing, but do it harder. But the way you listened to the staff and adjusted and are allowing and supporting that kind of autonomy, I find incredibly impressive, really hopeful. And my question is, you spent a lot of time gathering data and listening to schools. Are you going to be able to keep that up?
It's an involved process.
Yeah.
We are hoping to build capacity in the schools to be able to think in these, in these ways, to be able to self-report so that we are able to do roll-ups and we're not having to have such intensive schedules to, to keep up on that. One other thing that we're looking to do, currently our skip plans are in like a Google, a Google document. We are looking to use those and migrate them to more of a spreadsheet format or, or something similar so that as we're collecting the inputs on those, we're able to do roll-ups, we're able to do much more with that to, to streamline the process of reporting and monitoring as well so that there isn't quite that intensive one-on-one need to get the information that we're, we'll be able to be a little more facilitated through some of our tools.
And I think too, the longer we get into the process, the easier the sort of two-way communication becomes. You know, initially, it'll feel like the holder of the process is coming to deliver knowledge on the process. And that's not the point, right? It's to have a partnership through it. And so as people get more and more comfortable with what it looks like and how it kind of plays out, they'll be more and more willing to engage in, you know, bidirectional feedback that might not be as easy to get at first, but I think it gets easier the longer we go.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Director Workman?
So I, I have a question and, and this isn't directly related to the abbreviated schedule, but my question is if we need more Title I administrative staff in year 2026, where would that be in the budget? Maybe you're not the right person to ask for that. I mean, is it, how much flexibility do we have in the budget and how much more additional staff might, might we need that we have to look forward to, you know, take some from here and put it over there?
It would be outside my area of expertise.
Yeah, I, I would like to defer to, an expert on that.
And Andy can jump in. It, it is more tied to the balanced budget model than directly this, although title requires a lot of this stuff that they require a needs assessment, they require your goals. And so we're merging that into our skip process, which will be a time savings, but we're also, based on your decision last week, expanding the number of schools that get title funding. So there will be an aggregate increase of about, it, it really is two FTE that we're looking at and a reorganization of an existing FTE. And that will come from largely title funding with a couple other sources. We're going to bring back some coordination of volunteer efforts in the district, which has had nobody doing it, that will share some of that responsibility with the title analysis, because right now, there's nobody centrally who is trying to do what used to be called volunteers in education to be a conduit for people who want to volunteer. So that's why I say part of an FTE, that will be part of this, but it, it will fit nicely with that. And so we're actually moving that process forward in the very near future.
Within, within title, you have to do like a school-wide plan. And when it's not aligned like this, you end up having to do a site improvement plan and a school-wide title plan, and they're separate. And as a principal, I've had to do two. And it's silly because they're like the same and you're jumping through hoops and then you have to do this needs assessment for title and then you have to do a needs assessment for your, and the timing is all different. So like aligning all of this, it really does save time. And with the expansion of title to more schools, the timing is like it's, it's perfect. Like, it's going to make so much more sense.
Quick follow, yeah, quick follow-up. So on the, the unrolled cycle timeline, you have pref plus CNA. So I'd like to know what CNA is. I'm assuming it's not Certified Nursing Assistant?
I adopted the acronym that's used in title, which is the Comprehensive Needs Assessment.
Thank you.
And we're using it a little bit more loosely.
That makes more sense.
Yep.
I made that mistake at first, too.
Director Workman?
All right. I have three questions and it could just be because I'm late to the party. And I'll just ask all three questions and then you can do what you will with them. So my first question is around, we're on the five components of digital transformation and we put us there between the two and the three. So my first question is, what's the hesitancy with applying the data? Because I know collecting data is not new, so I would think that there is something else that's missing there if we have data and we haven't been applying it. I don't, I'm, I'm a little bit confused as to why. We've been collecting data for a long time and we are only there. My other question is, excuse me all, I haven't had enough coke today. I, I read through the comments that were written from the different administrators or whoever you interviewed. My question regarding their comments would be, we have made much mention to the fact that there are some schools that have implemented this skip process extremely well and we have other schools that have been struggling with the skip process. For me to objectively see the comments, I would personally like to know, are the comments coming from the schools that were struggling in implementing the skip and what their feedback was versus the schools that were thriving? And that brings me to my, my big question because if we have schools that are thriving with the skip process, not, and we are aware it's not perfect and it will need to continue to be improved upon, but I would wonder what are the commonalities of the schools that are thriving? And I'm not big on reinventing the wheel. So if we have schools thriving with the skip process, is it a class size, is it a location, is there PTSD involvement? Like, what are the commonalities of the schools that are seeing successful outcomes from the 1.0 vers, version of this? And when we discover those, is there any plan to do anything structural? So if we see that as we've implemented this, that schools with smaller class sizes or schools with X amount of administrators or whatever are thriving in this process and the schools without them are not, is there any plan to say, okay, well, structurally, it doesn't matter if we go to 7.0 skip without the structural changes, we're not going to see the improvement? So have, do we have any data related to that of my question?
The very first one I could certainly answer about data. I thi, it's not so, your point is very well taken. I think it's not so much that we haven't been using data, it's that the data that is available to us and its quality and what we have changes over time. So for example, with our FastBridge data, the district only really got into full implementation of that about two years ago. And so for a lot of our folks, it's learning how to use the effective data resources that they may have only really started grappling with in the last couple of years. And when it comes to MTSS and diagnosing those types of needs, there's a steep learning curve in applying like this item of data to this particular instructional practice. And I think a lot of that is where learning is occurring and it's not just RPSA, that's true everywhere. So it's not so much that we, we have not been using and interpreting the data. It's that those items and how they're used in terms of best practice changes over time and we get better at it as we go. So I, I think that's how I would probably answer that question, if, if that helps.
Yeah, and I can add to that just a little bit. The reason why we're not fully into number three insights is that we are still building our capacity and our comfort level in being able to interpret the data, triangulate that data to have the right data inform the decisions that need to be made. And, and that's a learning, it's a learning process, I think, for building leaders and all of our staff.
And sometimes it's, it is literally data overwhelm where we collect so much information that people aren't even necessarily sure which item to choose to inform the decisions they need to make. And that's when they contact folks like us and we talk their ideas and help them with that.
And part of the process that, I mean, that part of our strategic plan that we're working on now is putting systems in place so that we're working with the data, not just at the individual student level, but also at a classroom level, at a building level, and then looking at it at a, as a whole district level. And those systems weren't necessarily in place. So it's building that and that, that does take time. And you're right, data-rich, information-poor is, like, that's a real thing. You can have all kinds of things and just not, not know what to do with it.
Yep.
And I think there, we are building their data literacy across the board with the teachers and administrators.
And believe it or not, I've now been here three years. And in the three years that I've been here, I've seen a big change and improvement for the better across the board, for sure.
Your second question is, it relates to the successful schools and sites with their skip process and what are they doing specifically or, you know, is, is there a characteristic? I think from what I gathered, and, and I can't speak to the details of like in the classroom and student outcomes, but as we look at skip 1.0, many of the things and student outcomes, but as we look at Skip 1.0, many of the things that are being implemented for the initiatives are really putting in frameworks, starting some of the processes, starting to look at different systems and tools and practices. And so the success of schools that are implementing right now are very much, yes, we're doing the MTSS practice in this way, yes, we are effectively running professional learning communities, yes, we're doing this and this and this, and not necessarily tied to the much more data-rich outcomes or the evidence that we're looking to expand upon in 2.0, where we're looking at our goals, actually moving the needle on certain things. Right now, our success for Skip is getting these practices in place, and we're seeing that as success. And then kind of our next piece is going to be seeing how they're embedded and seeing what those outcomes are looking at.
I think the strongest correlation so far, and you kind of hit on it, that we've seen is schools that have set up their skips, so it's a very distributed leadership type of model, tend to have been able to make more progress. And schools that haven't necessarily made as big a shift that way, maybe not as much. But that's really just sort of an observation about whether teams have been empowered to go do more stuff besides just the skip team and how the school is organized. And that can vary on a lot of factors, how the principal and the team wants that, based on culture and everything else.
I think as far as characteristics of a school that, or the commonalities of schools that are successful currently, it's hard to pinpoint that because some of them are large, some of them are small, some of them have multiple administrators, some of them are singletons. And it really is dependent upon how they're able to orchestrate with the resources and the time constraints that they have. And so in Skip 2.0, we're looking to provide some supports and some tools and some adjustments on those fronts so that regardless of the size, regardless of how many principals are in a site, or the resources that they have at their disposal, that they'll be set up for more success.
The reality is continuous improvement involves continuous learning, comfortable with that, so this will continue to be a process that we just get better at.
Chair? I'll just, Director Whitehorn briefly address the issue of structural change, fundamental structural change, I think that was your third point. I think as Mona just said, I think we've laid the infrastructure. We were not using, we were not a data-informed system three years ago, full stop. We didn't have a research director, you know, we didn't have any, we've laid a lot of ground. That is, I think, bringing us to exactly the moment your question says, is okay, now are you going to just tinker around the edges, or are you going to look at fundamental structural change? I'm getting out to a lot of our, to all our schools to talk about this, and I will tell you, this morning at John Marshall, last Friday at Century, also at Washington, at John Adams, every one of these sites is beginning to think about fundamental changes of the structure of their schedules, the structure of their programming. For example, at Century, they were talking about, you know, needing to shift to a block schedule to address struggling students who need intervention. Now, there's a ton of homework and there's people in that school who would feel differently about it, but they're having that discussion. At John Marshall this morning, we talked about the desire to have an area learning center or an alternative learning center in their building so that they don't have to have kids waiting to get into the standalone ALC that has a 70 to 100 kid waiting list. And at Washington, they were talking about fundamental questions of the effectiveness of core knowledge as a curriculum for them right now. So I think the next strategic plan is all about empowering thoughtful changes in those core structures, and I think we're in a much better place to do that now because of these processes to help us make data-informed decisions than we would have been if we just said, just change it. So I think that's coming, and it's going to be a really important decision for this board to think about how, what structural changes need to be system-wide and what structural changes need to be site-specific. One other example that came up is right now in middle school, there really is no credit requirement to progress from grade to grade to grade and then go on to high school. This is a huge issue. If a kid is struggling and doesn't actually get credit, they show up in ninth grade and suddenly we expect them to get serious, and that's a gigantic shift. So how, we also know that grade, simplistic grade retention doesn't work. It just holds, especially for older adolescents, and we, it doesn't work for little kids, but it really doesn't work for eighth graders. So how could we add a structure that does require middle school students to earn credit to progress through middle school and on to high school? That's a huge structural issue, because we don't want to punish the kid, but we're not doing them a service by letting them essentially slide through a subset of our kids and then show up in high school and realize that they don't have the knowledge and skills they need to do high school-level work. So those are some of the issues that are coming up, and I think it's, that's really the next work of the next strategic plan.
I think it comes into the, the structural changes at the building level come in when you look at that needs assessment, because the push is going to be, we're not going to do our staffing the way we've done it, just on a different spreadsheet, right? It's you're doing your, you're doing your needs assessment and you're looking at the actual kids in front of you, and what do they need? And what is your, what plans are you putting forward in your site improvement plan? What programming do you need to provide for the actual kids in front of you? What changes need to happen in your building? And how are you going to provide that within your staffing model, within the flexibility that you have to help your kids grow? And that's ultimately where we should see success. So there needs to be some level of flexibility, and I agree, with some level of like foundational, like, we know, we know class sizes, until you get below 15, class sizes don't matter. So reducing a class size from 26 to 22, you're better off saving your FTE and using it somewhere else. You're not going to see changes there. So like, we know some things like that don't make a difference. But that's where the real work is going to be, and it's all intertwined right into this process. Those were really good questions.
And thank you. I just wanted you to know that where I was coming from thought process-wise was that, you know, for grouping all of the concerns together, which, you know, is the easier thing to do, I know I was focusing on the top-heavy, but also concerned about the schools that are not thriving, right? So the schools that are not thriving may have more complex concerns, and I just wanted to make sure that we are able to differentiate, you know, between that. So it sounds like with the needs assessment, some of that will get done. But my concern is that we do 2.0, and the schools that are thriving do even better, right? And we still have the struggling schools who didn't get 1.0 now trying to catch up to 2.0. So that's where my, my question is coming in. Thank you.
Marla?
I've had opportunity to rethink my original questions based on input that's been provided. I am curious, though, in terms of data resources, Dr. Rock, you referenced FastBridge. Do you think or believe that the district has the requisite software resources to adequately engage in meaningful, the meaningful assessments?
Yes, I do.
Which can occur, and presently?
Yes, I do.
District-wide?
Yep.
And so this will not fall to individual sites to fund through their budgets?
No, those performance measures are items that we already collect at a central level and that we're very confident in. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I, from this discussion, it sounds like aligning the timing of the Skip 2.0 planning and implementation process with the Title process makes a lot of sense, given what the board has already decided in terms of its allocation of Title dollars and so forth. I'm wondering a little bit, though, about the opportunities for family and community engagement in this Skip 2.0 process, especially given that it's going to be happening earlier in the year. As a, even a very involved parent at several schools, it's hard for me to think about the next school year in January of the current school year. And I'm just wondering what, if anything, and maybe this came out of some of the input that you already received from staff, could be done to facilitate the robust type of community engagement, family involvement, that we'd really like to see as part of this process? Any initial thoughts on that?
I know that part of the needs assessment contains a family component about how families or will, like, the needs assessment will contain items on family engagement, how families are drawn into, you know, decision-making processes and that type of feedback. That type of feedback generally won't change a whole lot, depending on the time of the year, because it's not really about a specific thing, it's just more about, am I involved, can I be involved, are there mechanisms for that? And then each school now, and it varies, we talked about this, has different levels of, not even levels, approaches to engaging parents in their, in their planning activities. And it's, a lot of that is dependent upon the culture the school has, who the parents are, where, and how it all. And so that can vary from school to school, and we didn't want to step on those toes, because if their engagement is working, that's fantastic. So that wasn't prescriptive intentionally, but as a part of the needs assessment and as one of the many different initiatives that I could see, could envision taking place, yes, absolutely. I could even envision a family engagement initiative pretty easily under some of these things.
Yeah, and the family engagement is, it really is a vehicle to help achieve certain outcomes. And so independently, it's not going to be just some side thing that gets implemented as a skip process. We are looking at integrating that as a mechanism to achieve a goal in concert with other aspects of improvement. Essentially, and across the district, we're going to continue the family engagement survey process and be intentional with the types of questions that we're asking and being able to directly tie some of those inputs from the families to actionable steps. At each site level, it is going to vary, and how that gets incorporated into the school's skip team and process specifically, I think is going to be less prescribed by Central, but perhaps you want to note on that.
Yeah, I'm, yes, in the needs assessment, and Will and I have talked about this a lot, I'm not satisfied with our measures of family engagement, either the survey we give or other measures, like how many people go to step into learning, how many people go to conferences. We need some better measures. But for sure, it needs to be in the needs assessment. Two other issues are the school improvement teams. And I know I got an email, I haven't even had a chance to respond to it yet, from Joanne Barkmeyer, who is our president of our area PTAs, really arguing for parent involvement on the skip teams. And when we come back to you, that will be, the composition of those teams will be one of the things that we'll be bringing to you as we build out this process. My personal orientation would be, I would strongly encourage sites to have parents on their skip team. Requiring it really can also be challenging, because as you said, these are not people who are educators who work on our schedules and who think about school improvement in February, when they're worried about focused on their kids. And so requiring parent involvement on that can mean, can you find someone who has the time and commitment, and are they truly representative of the incredible diversity of parents? But it's an option, and there are places around the country that have said you must have parents on your site team, your school improvement team. So that's one of the things that we'll bring you. Right now, we've said it must include both general education and special education staff, and then staff who provide student services, like a counselor or things. We could go beyond that, and certainly the email that Joanne sent, I think, is an important, it crystallizes some of these issues that we'll be thinking about. Thanks.
I'll just add also that those are some of the more formal ways for getting some of the input from families, but we also have monthly family engagement meetings that occur all year long, so that it's not dependent on whatever's happening at that time. We have different topics for every month where the families can receive information from the district, but they can also give their insights to what's going on, and that happens all year long. But I think we can do better at is broadcasting that so we get more families involved in that, in that routine of showing up monthly, so we're not waiting until the end of the year to do the survey to get that information. We're gathering that information all year long and adjusting as the school year is going on.
I didn't know that was true. Somebody's asking. People are watching. That's very funny.
Chair Nathan, I have a follow-up on Mr. Rothman's comment. Are those, just for people who are listening, are those meetings you're talking about, are they each site having them monthly, or is it district-wide?
This is district-wide.
Okay. So each month there is one in the different locations amongst the district?
Absolutely.
Got it. Thank you.
I'll take a chance to ask some questions. So if, when I look at the cycle and I look at it starting in January, and I've heard a lot of the talk about Skip 2.0, I know that there's also a Skip 2.0 beta that is kicking off even as we speak, as I look at everybody in this room. So how will, what's going to be concentrated in the next few months to get us to a budget decision in June, going to be different parts of this, all of this?
The main difference between beta and 2.0 is time. We, right now, if we tried to launch the kind of rigorous data-driven decision-making that is going to be required to fully realize the promise of this new process, there simply are not hours in the day that are available this year in planning for next year. And so it is going to be a lighter touch needs assessment and planning process. Next year, we will dedicate the curriculum and adjustment days on the calendar, the professional development days on the calendar, to building out this process. We will, we will make space for it. Right now, the primary focus at the elementary level is our curriculum adoption and win wisdom. If we told them that they needed to engage in this now, when they're overwhelmed with that, similarly, there are similar priorities that are occupying the bandwidth for our middle schools and high schools. And so we're going to move this forward this spring, but it's going to be a less intensive and rigorous one, because we have to make space for it. We're also going to have time to build out new tools. We're going to integrate the Alloview software with our school improvement planning process in a way that I think is going to be very important for especially school principals, and that's going to take some time. We're going to continue to work with Afton Partners as our technical assistance provider on that. So I think the short answer, Chair Nathan, is time and tools are the things, and that we will make a good start this spring, but that next year, we really will have that very rigorous process, aligned process, and then we're fully in it for the 27, 26, 27 school year.
So whatever skip plan is developed in relationship to this year of his budget, it'll start all over again with a three-year cycle for a Skip 2.0?
I'm not sure about that. But actually, we haven't landed on a solution to that. How do we, I would hope, start all over again is not what happens. I would hope that they have identified their targeted areas for improvement, many of which our sites are already aware of, and have begun to develop their improvement initiatives that then can be greatly enhanced through the new process, so that we're not kicking the hand down the road an entire different year, and we're also not restarting everything. But yeah, this is the quintessential reinventing the airplane while you're flying it kind of an issue, because nobody's going to get to stop serving kids and running schools to take a year to just plan. That'd be great, but that's not reality, and so we're going to have to, we're going to have to make this transition as we go.
So for this, the development of the budget for the 25, 26 year, is the board going to take action to define the performance measures?
That would be my hope. The degree to which we would ask schools to fully align their plans around them is the question, for sure by 2.0. But what we don't want to do is, I think, I mean, probably not just in schools, in corporate America too, you adopt goals that are good goals, but you don't have the time or resource to develop serious strategies to align them, then the goals themselves become farcical. You know, you actually then just sort of, we look at them and admire the vision, but we don't have serious strategies to get there, and that's obviously not what we're aiming for. So the degree to which we will, this spring, ask our schools... So the degree to which we will, this spring, ask our schools to focus their improvement initiatives on those performance measures that we'll be bringing to you this spring is a question that I'm thinking. We're actually going to dedicate our entire district-wide leadership meeting later this month to getting feedback, not just from our school principals, but also from our central office staff on that precise question.
And I know that in that cycle of work, there were points of action for the board regarding the budget. So we just talked about an additional one, which is the approval of performance measures. And I think in your memo on the balanced budget memo, you mentioned that we would also be approving criteria for your review of the skip plans. Is that something that's to happen this spring as well?
I would hope so. Yeah, I would hope so. That we would basically be having you set the standards for how we work with sites, both to build their capacity and frankly to approve, and I think to Director Whitehorn's point, if you have a school where things are not going well, we don't just stand by and watch it flounder, you know? How do we provide that direction, that intensive support? So that's the kind of thing, when I talk about board-approved criteria, it's you saying, yep, we want you to take these steps when these situations are observed.
And I know that in the past, we've sort of evolved how much the board gets informed about individual school's skip plans. We used to have the presentations at the board. This year, we're going and making the site visits to see them in action. And then this year, we're having, I think, maybe one or two agenda items where you've given us a summary of what the individual schools have done with their skip plans. Is that going to be a component of the process before we review the budgets, just to understand what the priorities are that the schools are setting so that when we get the actual budget numbers, we have an understanding of why they look that way?
I would say, Chair Nathan, for sure, when we get to 2.0, this spring, there's so much basic work, design work to do on the budget and on this process, that that might be premature for this year, but eventually. The other thing is, the way I've thought of organizing that is actually by success measure. So as opposed to by school, we're going to look at everything Willow Creek is aiming to do. That's one way to do it. The other way to do it is to look across the system at graduation rates, or literacy, or attendance, or staff satisfaction. So we're looking at those, what are the goals that all of our sites are setting tied to those success measures? The logic of that would be, then we're having a deeper conversation about what it takes to deal, for instance, with ninth graders who don't earn a credit and therefore struggle to graduate on time, rather than everything Century High School has on its priority list. So that's kind of an early way I've been thinking about it. Because I know sometimes, I mentioned I've been having these, these conversations in our schools, and they're by design very fluid and unstructured, which every time reminds me of both the importance, but also the complexity of our work. Because we literally go from reading to behavior to staff morale to post-secondary readiness, and it's all our work. And it gets kind of whiplash as you go. But that's the purpose of those conversations. I don't think we want that to be the characteristic of the board's review of our improvement strategy. So.
And I would think that those conversations would also surface, if we're looking at the strategies for a specific performance measure, and we hear from multiple schools, we all wanted to do this, but we don't have the resource to do it, or the people don't exist that we're looking for to do it, or we can't implement the strategy because it's beyond, you know, our capacity. It would allow us to plan for the future and then you build that.
Yep. One of the things that we haven't talked a lot about, even at the staff level, much less with the board, is as we get this skip process in place at the site level, how do our processes and structures change centrally to support that new process? How do we organize the central office around this structure to support and inform it? I mean, it's on my mind all the time, but it's something that is, is something that a lot of school districts don't do very well. You know, it's the, what was the famous line, "I'm from the government, I'm here to help"? It's kind of like, "I'm from the central office, I'm here to help." Whereas, like at John Marshall today, they are preparing tomorrow for a meeting of their English department with, talking about the FastBridge data and literacy. And they were telling me that Justine Trueblood, who is now working in Mona's department on multi-tier systems support and literacy, prepped and set up the whole presentation and discussion for the school leadership team with the English department. And that took, that not only took something off the plates of people who are very, very busy, it leveraged Justine's expertise in the area. So they, they didn't have to become experts in MTSS at the high school level, and she's provided. Now, they're still going to have that discussion at JM. It's theirs to have. But the central office came in and, from what I heard this morning, provided very actionable, hands-on support for an issue that they know they need to grapple with because we know we've got kids that are, can't access the curriculum because they're not reading at the high school level.
Director Whitehorn?
And I just, it's a comment more so than a question, but to Director Cook's point on the family engagement, you know, we do have that monthly meeting. It's at a very peculiar time, at 10:00 AM. I have attended some in the past, haven't attended any recently. But as a parent, I see your point of saying that, you know, you may not be thinking there. But as a district, I feel that if we did require parent involvement as part of our setup, you know, that would then require for, you know, it would propel parent involvement, right? So these 10:00 AM meetings are not going to work. So that's going to mean that people, our district is going to have to get more creative with reaching out to parents. So I actually see the bonus side of saying, well, if we are requiring a parent involvement piece of this, you know, yeah, we all got to cop out, we too busy, we're this, we're that, you know. But I think that that would help propel us more towards getting community and parent involvement. I think we're straying away from it, maybe for incorrect reasons, if we're just assuming that all the parents are not thinking that far away. A lot of people have more than one child, so you have kids older or younger. So you may already have ideas about eighth or ninth grade because you've already had an eighth or ninth grader. So I don't think we should be just so quick to just assume that it's going to be too complex. Because I feel like this is something we keep coming back to, is how are we involving the community and how are we involving parents? And then when we have the opportunity to make it a requirement to involve parents, we say, no, we're not going to do it. So I think if we start to add those components into our structure, instead of just saying, well, if parents come, they come. If they don't, they don't. Maybe that will help to get what we're looking for. Because right now, you know, we're, we're people and we have ease. But I think if we create that into our actual structure, it will force some of these conversations on how we're going to get our community involved. Right now, it's very abstract. There's no reason for us to actively reach out to parents because they're not part of the plan. But I think that us removing them from the plan might not be the better of ideas if we really want to move towards a more community-involved, school-based system.
Any other comments for members? Any closing comments, T? Thank you for all of this work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And the conversation's going to go forward more. Our next focus topic is 3.2, five-year general fund financial forecast. Superintendent Pecow.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. One thing I want to say in brief before turning it over to Andy Croxstedt, who's our Director of Finance, and I'm sure John Carlson, our Chief Minister of Officer, will jump in. The discussion of deficits is unavoidably a part of the forecast that we're going to look at right now. And I want to be really clear that in making the commitments that we made to the community about the referendum, we absolutely considered the likelihood of what you're going to hear about right now, which is a deficit in the out years that I'm confident we can address. But the commitment that we made in the referendum is we are not closing schools, we are not raising class size, and we're not making major cuts to district systems and programs, at least for the first years of the referendum 10-year period. I am confident that we can meet those commitments. We have done that since I've been here, and I'm confident that we can do that again. And as you will see in the parameters that we recommend you give us for the budget, we would be charged with developing a long-term financial stability strategy. There is no question that the deficits that are there in some of the out years would be catastrophically worse if the referendum had not passed. We would be looking at what many school districts are looking at, which is a financial freefall. We are not. But we have some issues that Andy will touch on now. But I wanted to start out with that note of hope and commitment to the investments that our community made, yeah, even though obviously, we need to provide the board with the information that Andy's going to go through now.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Pecow. Board, happy to be back here again. Dr. Marvin, I don't think you're going to be as excited as about my presentation as you were my colleagues before me, but perhaps.
I'll pretend.
Okay. I would appreciate that. Thank you. I want to first, before we get started, just, just to tell you what the forecast is and what it is not. It's very important to understand, it is not the budget. We're using this year's budget as a baseline to look at the future years, but the future years do not represent the budget. What do they represent? And this is what it is. It represents our, our best estimate of our revenues and expenditures in each of those years, and how that difference between those two, whether it's a gain or a loss, affects our fund balance. So that's really what the forecast is. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. And that you're not looking at this from the lens of, oh, the budget, oh, wow, you know, there's, there's X million deficit. Because we haven't prepared the budget for each of those out years yet, obviously. So why do we do these? And there's, there's, there's four key reasons. And I won't read these, but it's really the, a couple of them that I really want to focus on is resource allocations, which has really been something that the, the committee, internal group, along with AFTN Partners, has really obviously focused on a lot in the last, in the last year. And then obviously transparency. I'm a very, very big proponent of transparency, both obviously at the board level, but more importantly, at the community level. So as we look to prepare these forecasts, we're not necessarily looking at them from a conservative, and I don't mean that politically, but conservative budgeting perspective or forecasting perspective. We're trying to really be as honest and transparent as we can be with the information that we know at the time that we're preparing it. So a little bit different this year than I've done in, well, I've only done this one other time last year, but I wanted to focus a little bit on really a key metric. And as you look at the, both the memo and, and the slides, there's not as much information on the expense side, right? Because in some cases, those are controllable. But I wanted to really focus your attention on our enrollment. And what does the enrollment mean for our forecast? It is absolutely critical. I, we can't emphasize that enough. Because our enrollment drives our two largest revenue sources, which would be our state aid and our local levies. So as we prepared our enrollment projection this year, we used the previously discussed cooperative strategies forecast, or enrollment projection that was done three years ago. And we also used a tool from our data analysis company, Forecast Five, which helps me produce the reports that you see each month on our budget to actual and fund balance projections, et cetera. So those are two very independent sources. And when we pulled them together, the projections were 15 students different between the two. So we felt fairly confident that our enrollment numbers that we're putting in this forecast, and the enrollment number that we're using for FY '26 budget, is, is fairly close. There's always going to be some variances, and we're going to continue to monitor that as we move into the budget cycle. It's also important to understand this. We talk often about October 1, October 1, October 1 numbers. What are, what are our numbers on October 1? Because MDE uses that as a, as a, as a reporting timeline for many, for many reasons. But as we look at our membership on October 1, and then as we project what our membership looks like at the end of the year, there is a loss of that historically over, and we went, we've gone back several years. But I asked our team to look at the last five years historically, and 98% of those members on October 1 become a full 1.0 ADM at the end of the year in the K-12 category. 57% in their early childhood. So what does that mean? That means 2% of our K through 12 students are not generating a 1.0 average daily membership at the end of the year. So over the course of the year, they have not been in school long enough to generate a 1.0 ADM. It may, maybe they moved between October 1st and the end of the year. Perhaps they open enrolled somewhere else out of the district, decided to go to a private school. There's a number of reasons why. But it's important to understand. So when we give you an October 1 number, we're fairly confident that's going to be lower the following year at the end of the year, which is what our actual revenues are going to be based on when we, when the state finalizes its revenue for us, and also with our levies. We provide a levy amount, but that is adjusted up or down based on what our actual enrollment ends up being. That comes in outer, future years. So again, we need those ADMs to drive what then is what we call our adjusted pupil units. Adjusted pupil units are a measurement that the state uses then to calculate the revenue. An adjusted pupil unit is that factor that is then used both in the levy and for the general ed, general aid formula. A K through 6 student is a 1.0 APU. So our $7,200 and some odd dollars, which is the general ed formula amount, times $1, or times 1, that's what that student generates. Secondary, though, 7th through 12th, it's 1.2, or 20% on, on top of that. So that 1.0 ADM is multiplied by 20%, multiplied by the $7,200 and some dollars, right? That becomes that student's revenue for us for that particular year. So a couple of different acronyms and, and enrollment characteristics or enrollment descriptions I wanted to provide to you, just for clarity. Because again, we talk about enrollment a lot, and these are things I've learned, obviously, over the two years because I was not in school finance prior to, to here, but recognizing the importance of enrollment. Finally, I did, did want to mention that we are going to be going into a new independent, or undertaking a new independent enrollment study this spring. Hazel Reinhardt, who I believe was the former demographer for the state of Minnesota, now does this for school districts around the state, and we will begin that process. We are beginning that process. We've been in contact with her, and our team will be working closely with her to build out then new projections for the, for the coming years. Anecdotally, I've heard she's very accurate. So we've had a, we've had other colleagues tell us that. So we'll, we'll be doing that. So those, again, I like the concept of two different independent approaches. So I may ask that we continue to do that from our team so that we really then say, boy, I think we're pretty close. We're, we're right on, okay? Enough about enrollment in terms of the process. Where are we? So you can see those numbers. This particular school year, you can see the ADM that we had on October 1st, and then what we're projecting it to be at the year, and that's taking into consideration those particular losses or declines in ADM from day one through the end of the school year. So we take that same formula and we apply it next year. Our enrollment projection indicates that we have 16,974 ADM, or we can call it students in this instance, but ADM on day one, or October 1st. It's, it's basically the same, the same thing. We give a few days for things to come together, and then MDE says, what's your numbers on October? What are your numbers on October 1st? If we apply those same loss ratios, percentages, we know that by the end of the 25, 26 school year, our enrollment, our ADM rather, is adjusted down to 16,635 students, which is really what we should be using then to calculate our revenue. Because that's what our actual revenue is going to be based on, is what do we actually generate in ADM. So you can see the two different numbers. There's a starting year number, then there's some loss throughout the year, and then the projection that was done becomes the starting point for the next year. So that's what the 16,974 represents. So that's what the 16,974 represents.
Correct. I know we're, I don't want to mess up your flow, but since it's a study session, the way that I have always conceptualized the average daily membership is that it's the consequence of 10% to 15% of your student population enrolling and then unenrolling at some point in the year, because the actual average daily membership is like a weighted average based on the actual number of days that each student is enrolled in the district, whereas the October 1 number is the snapshot in time, actual number of students enrolled at that time. And the way that this information is presented here and in the memo, it seems like throughout the year, we're having some attrition overall of students that start, and then by the time we get to the end of the calendar year, we have less students than what we started with. And that might actually be the case, but I know we're also continuously enrolling new students throughout the year from people that are moving to the district and so forth, and there's this churn. Those newly enrolled students that don't join until January or something are also not getting a full ADM weight. So I just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to separate those two narratives between like the 10% of students that have some churn and changes in enrollment status throughout the year versus an overall decline of students that are leaving the district for other educational opportunities, so that we start with a much higher number of, actual number of students enrolled at the beginning of the year compared to the end of the year. Can you just clarify which one it is that we're talking about?
The way that I learned this, and John can correct me if I say something incorrect, please, but we shouldn't think of ADM necessarily as headcount, because you could have multiple students creating a 1.0 ADM, so they're aggregated. So as a district, we are generating 16,635 1.0 ADMs at the end of the school year. That doesn't mean we have 16,635 students. We could have more than that. But when we look at the funding percentage, correct, John? So as we look at the funding, though, the funding is based on the 1.0 ADM. So sometimes there's the confusion between actually what's the enrollment, and perhaps enrollment might be, we believe that on day 1, we're going to have 16,974 1.0 ADMs, which means we have that many students in the building on that day, and they're going to generate a 1.0 through the end of the year, just for planning purposes. That's what that, that's what that number says. But between that day and the end of the year, we know the churn that you mentioned, some come in, but they don't generate a 1.0, some leave, but they've generated some portion of an ADM that's aggregated together to generate the 16,635 by the end of the year. We could have more actual enrollment at the end of the year, bodies in seats at the end of the year than 16,635, but some of those are not generating the full ADM, so therefore we're not going to get the full benefit of their general ed formula or the levy that a 1.0 would get. So there is a slight distinction between bodies or headcount and ADM.
I'm using 1 for all the way through 12, because you said 7th through 12, it was 1.2, but we're using 1 all the way through for this projection.
That is, that's a great question. Just to clarify, that is the average daily membership. So that's the difference between the average daily membership and the adjusted pupil unit. The state recognizes that it costs us more for the, to provide the courses and the teachers at the secondary level. So they give us 20% more per student for 7th through 12th grade. So that's, that's the adjusted portion, so that's the adjusted pupil unit.
So is that calculated, though, into this?
No, this is what becomes the adjusted. So for, just for argument's sake, 16,635 at the end of the year, 10,000 of that is perhaps, that's too high, I'm just going to use rough numbers, 10,000 of it is secondary. We would actually have 1.2 times 10,000 is how we would be, how we would be paid. The other 6,635 would be paid at the 1.0 formula. So I didn't put those formulas in there because I didn't necessarily think we would get to this point. I do think perhaps we could come back at another time and actually go through some of the formulas, or we could meet one-on-one and do some of that. But I think if we could, if I had put those formulas in here, you would see how that calculates. The 1.0 ADM becomes an adjusted pupil unit, which equates to actual dollars then.
Justin, I think maybe to fill in the gap, that there is a real projected loss of headcount from October 1, 2024, 17,323, down to 16,974. So we are saying through this projection, we will be 349 students less next year as a school district than this school year on that one day, you know, that we compare to.
Year-over-year.
Probably if we were digging the numbers more deeply, we'll see that our 12th grade class going out is bigger than our kindergarten class coming in, with some small churn in other grades, where we have a known pattern of maybe losing a percent or two from a grade. But the biggest difference is 12th grade versus kindergarten is just, that's where the biggest change is going to be.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so good question, please. So the actual headcount on September 30th and October 2nd might be different than the headcount on October 1st, but we use the October 1 number, because I remember there was some noise about, you know, keep your kids home on October, on October 1st so that we can make sure there's less money coming into the district.
Sure, and that really doesn't matter.
It doesn't factor in, correct?
Right, right, because it's an enrollment number, not an attendance on that day. So whether they showed up or didn't show up, it's are they enrolled or not. But then, as Andy's been explaining, it really is, you have to look at the whole, the whole calculation determines what we get paid on.
Sorry to sidetrack you, but I appreciate the clarifications. Thanks.
Moving forward. So then as we take a look at those, obviously, that enrollment then obviously generates our revenue. That becomes the factor used for our revenue. Dr. Pekel mentioned this already. Obviously, those items that were part of the, or excuse me, the approval of the referendum revenue, that's included in here, as are when we get to the expenses, those particular commitments to fund. That revenue, the new revenue as part of the referendum that was passed last year, and the 2024 extension of the 2015 referendum. So if you recall, you extended the 2015 revenue, or referendum rather, last year for another 10 years. Those dollars are both, both of those referendum are combined and in here as revenue. They include both of them at 2.5% inflation factor. That is great, but we have to point out that that inflation is partial, on both of those referendum, are partially offset by the loss of enrollment, because if you remember, this number of students is used to calculate what those levies actually generate. And so an inflation is great, otherwise you'd be going the opposite direction, but at least we're making up, we're making more in terms of the revenue than we're losing. But I'll have a statistic for you here in just a moment that I can share. Also, in terms of our revenue projections, as we look forward, obviously, we're retaining all of those other board-approved levies, those that don't require voter approval. Safe schools is an example of one of those. And then Mayo Clinic's one-time donation, I just wanted to mention, all of that, all of those dollars are in this year's budget, so they're no longer available after fiscal year '25.
So Andy, just to clarify on the referendum amount. In all of our communications on both of the referendums, we kept referring to, in the last case, it was $1,133 per pupil. That was the, that was the question. The question was not $19.4 million.
That is correct.
So the inflation of 2% is applied to that $1,133?
Correct.
And then the calculation is that $1,133 inflated times these enrollment numbers?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
The, that's absolutely correct. I couldn't say it any better. So I'll move on.
Just want to make sure.
You're absolutely right. On the state revenue, similarly, the same calculations are made. What your enrollment, what is the enrollment times the general education formula for that particular year, obviously then generates the bulk of our, the largest share of our state aid. We have several other categorical aids, but that's the largest. I did also want to mention there is some increased special education funding, student support aids. Student support aid right now is being used for chemical health counselors in our high schools. So we're expecting an increase in that as well, so I believe that program perhaps may be slightly expanded. I'm not sure what the, you know, the use is yet for that, but, but just understand that there are some increases. And then really, in terms of federal funding, federal revenue essentially flat at this particular point, since all of the COVID-era money is now used up. So as we then look at where we are, revenue assumptions for the next five years, again, I'm not going to, not going to go into, read all of these for you, but I just wanted to make sure that this, to highlight this chart where we are this year, and then obviously where we, where we project next year. And as I mentioned, you know, earlier, the further out we get, or I didn't say this, but I should have, the further out we get, obviously, the less unknowns that exist. We also should take into consideration this year is a state budget year, so anything, anything is on the table. You know, we are projecting to still have the cost of living inflator in the general ed formula moving forward. You know, that's, we're at the whim of the legislature, so who knows? I mean, we're projecting that. So again, that's why we're saying a lot of these things are unknown, and we really don't know until we get closer. Expenditures. And I didn't get into as much detail here, because I really think we need to focus on the revenue and enrollment, because these things, in many instances, we have the ability to manage these a little bit more closely, but don't so much on the revenue side. We don't have opportunities to really generate our own revenues, unlike, you know, the private sector, or just raise levies at will, like our counterparts. So we are factoring a 3% increase each year in salaries and wages. Whether that's enough or not, I'm not sure. I will tell you that a couple of contracts I saw on the city council's website be approved last week had 4% increases in there. So, but some of the significant increases we've seen, which were necessary and important and worthwhile over the last two years, may not, just frankly, aren't probably sustainable into the future, as we look at how much revenue we have to generate, or have to pay and to cover all of those. Pensions, TRA in legislation last year also, or I think it was two years ago actually, increased from 8.75% to 9.5%. So that's a 3/4% increase on the employer's side, and so that obviously is an increase moving forward. Health insurance, we're producing, or we're projecting 9, well, we do have a 9% increase this year. That was established. Obviously, that will be half of fiscal year '26 as well. And then we've projected a 7% increase in the years moving beyond that. Based on some information, we talked about with our consultants when we established the 9% increase, we think it's possible, again, unless there's catastrophic economic challenges, again, which we can't predict, that we may even be able to see that, that 7% number may be more realistic. And so that's why I'm trying to be, in this case, as perhaps, as thoughtful, but ensuring that we're not necessarily going lower than we should. Purchased services and supplies and materials, those are going to be, those are going to be a little bit more difficult to maintain at the 2% increase, so especially with purchased services, those are our contracts, and we have some, we have some rising contracts, especially in the transportation area, which I know John has brought to the board previously. We're going to have to really seriously dig through all of our purchased services and begin to think about what is absolutely critically, critically important and necessary, perhaps from a software subscription is one of those. What areas of consultation do we have as a district? What consultants do we have? And are there areas where we can pull back? Because as we think about software subscriptions, and I'll speak to that specifically, it's not the largest share, but it's a big portion of this, those costs are going up double digits every year in terms of percentage. The vendors are charging significant increases, and so many of those are absolutely necessary. Google, Microsoft, EdUcliner, many of these other platforms we've talked about to operate. So if they're necessary, we have to make some adjustments somewhere else, and I think that's something we have to think about. And again, here, I just sort of laid it out year by year in the major categories. Finally, all of this, all of this boils down to how does it affect our fund balance? And the board, as you, as you may, as you all well know, has an 8% unassigned fund balance. And we, we believe that if we made no worse corrections, we could still continue to achieve that through fiscal year '27. Then beyond that, however, we would, we would drop below the 8%, and obviously would become negative in terms of our unassigned fund balance by fiscal year '29. I can't reiterate enough, those projections and those out-years are just assuming there's no change to either our revenue or our expenses moving forward. So we know we have opportunities to make adjustments based on what we know we end up receiving in revenue. So, but to Dr. Pekel's point, those numbers would have been increased exponentially had we not had the referendum investment. So that is really the presentation I plan to share with you. I did have some charts and graphs, because I always like those, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions specific to those. I didn't include them in the presentation, however.
Our members? Okay, well, then I'll start with some questions. I want to get back to enrollment, but I want to talk hypothetically about some of the expenditures. So if we were able to find some additional revenue in fiscal year '26 or fiscal year '27, would those projections in the out-years look better?
Well, if we found additional revenues?
Yes.
Yes, as long as we didn't use those revenues, as long as we didn't use them.
We didn't expect, right. So if we, for example, found a way to maintain those 339 ADMs, and, because as I calculated it based on the state general formula revenue, that's about $3 million. So if we were able to keep those, or bring those students in the district, that could be additional revenue that we could maintain over time.
A proportion of it would be maintained, because I'm sure we'd have to add some additional teaching staff possibly, depending on where our numbers are.
And when we talk revenues, we, I think we always have to talk about our cross subsidies. So what is our current special education and English learner cross subsidy? I can tell you what you told me in the email the other day.
I was going to do a quick Google search on what I told you a month or so.
Yes. So our special education cross subsidy is $18.9 million, and our English learner cross subsidy is 3.8. So if for some reason the state was able to cover more of that cross subsidy in the next few years, that would also make our projections look better in later years.
And I do believe, I have to go back and look at legislation, I do believe there's an adjustment. Actually, I know there's an increase into the English learner cross subsidy aid does increase, I believe, in fiscal year '26.
But they're
That would have been factored in.
They're not yet at 100%.
No, 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 no.
Okay. And then as far as some of our expenditure areas, with the health insurance costs, we chose to share the costs of the premiums with our employees, so that reflects that increase of the 2.2 million as the portion of the premiums increase. What other control do we have over our premium costs?
Well, we've done a lot of work in that area. Frankly, I think one of the things that we did this year, we implemented a new tier with a direct contract with Olmsted Medical Center, and that actually, for those that choose to use that, and this will be really important, and I think it may take a year or two to kind of bring that momentum, they're providing better, better rates to us than we can receive just through our standard agreement with Health Easy, who has the network that we participate in. And so for those that choose that, they both, they pay less for that service, and we pay less for our portion of it. So it's a shared savings. So those are the kinds of strategic decisions we're trying to make. And really, And and really, it's about building, it's about, it's about bringing up the membership within the health, the group coverage as well, especially with a lot of our younger employees, trying to get them, entice them with the the plan itself to bring them into the plan because they tend to be healthy. They don't have the number of, of obviously expenditures that that someone who's been in the district for several years, or as they've gotten older, such as myself, would have. But they're contributing through their portion of the premium, for example. So those are the kinds of things we're trying to do in that area. But this year, OMC and that agreement was one of the key metrics that we believe is gonna begin. And we have seen actually this year, or I should say last year, calendar year '24, we we did have a slight decrease in our overall expenditures related to healthcare.
And then I want to ask one question about enrollment. So Superintendent, you've talked in the past about wanting to be the provider of choice in Rochester. And during the referendum, we talked about enrolling 76.8% of the kids in our district who could potentially be in the schools. When we do this updated enrollment projections in the spring with the demographer, how will that relate to what you've talked about, which is the strategy of making sure we're doing everything we can to attract all the students that we can and retain them in the district? Are those two separate pieces?
Essentially, they're two separate pieces. The enrollment study is just to make sure we're getting the numbers right. And that's the quintessential, like diagnosing the patient doesn't cure the patient. And so the enrollment strategy really, I think, needs to be a foundational aspect of the next strategic plan. It is why we are undertaking the vision, mission, values, and branding work that Amy and Momsu updated the board on at the last meeting. We have a good story. We have a great educational product, but we don't necessarily market effectively as we need to. And we need to shift the product, and we need to make the kinds of changes that are there. I will also say, and we'll update the board this summer when we do our overview of our work on attendance and our data, we can do an increasingly effective job of keeping the kids we have, which is a critical priority. It's priority first for them because we want to make sure that they are progressing toward graduation and for secondary education or some kind of career. But it has those benefits for us as well. So that slide that Andy has talked about is not destiny. And there are things that I think we can do. In the early work that Angie McAndrews has been doing as our Director of Student Engagement, we are finding that we have kids who get dropped because they don't come to school for the required 15 days. And I think to Director Whitehorn's comment about family engagement, we are frequently able to reach them and find out what's going on with the kid and get them re-enrolled. And we, up to now, have not had a robust system of doing that. I think Angie told me in one day, she set the, she identified 18 kids who had dropped because of the 15-day drop, which is the law. We have to do that. I think we have to do a lot to prevent it, but once it happens, it happens. And was able to reach in one day 16 of the 18, get some of them re-enrolled, or identify the reason that they were not enrolled. Well, Grandma's sick in Mexico, and so they went down to Mexico, and they're gonna be there for two months. Well, are they coming back to Rochester? Yeah, we think they're coming back to Rochester, but they're down there. And so we can't maintain them on their enrollment unless we could get them in the online school, which is an interesting point. So I think that that's another piece of it, that we want to do it first for educational, and I would even say moral reasons, but also for financial ones as well. So that's gonna be a big piece of that enrollment strategy.
Board members, send me up Director Whitehorn.
I don't, I don't speak budget, I don't think. Or maybe I just can't read, I'm not sure. But so I see on the revenue assumptions page, I see numbers. And then on the expenditure assumption page, I see numbers. But then I see new numbers on the fund balance. Am I the only person that sees that? So it it looks like there's enough money, but then when I flipped the page over, there wasn't enough money, and I don't, I don't know where the money went. And then my other question is, with the Family Medical Leave Act that is gonna be coming into place, has that also been taken into accountability when we're looking at the health insurance portion? Because I, as a small business owner, I know that that impacts a lot of businesses, and I'm assuming it will affect the school district as well, as there will be an additional cost to all employers that will be mandated by the state that will be have, that will need to be paid out. So I don't know if that was calculated when we were looking at '26 and beyond. But I don't really understand how we got these numbers from the other numbers.
But I'll just talk about this graph, and that's a great question. So so think of our fund balance as our savings account, just like you have at home. And if you look at this, then the the second, the second row is our revenue. So that will align to that first chart you see that's the revenue year by year. So that's the money that comes in, right? That's added to the fund balance. So essentially, you're adding to your savings account. Then the second table that you see are the expenditures. That then comes out of the savings account, arriving at what your ending number is. So that's really what those first four rows represent for each particular year. Where did we start? How much did we make? How much did we spend, and where did we end? And I'm happy to meet separately with you on this as well, if that would help. But 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 what we, there's the revenue that I just broke out, and the revenue assumptions ultimately. Those carry down into this table. And then the expenditures are deducted from the revenue that we bring in. And then anything that's left, or if we happen to have spent more than we bring in, that affects the fund balance. So the fund balance is really what we want to maintain, a strong, healthy fund balance. And the board has indicated that the unassigned fund balance. So what is the unassigned fund balance? It's the percentage of money that we, unassigned means we have, the board has full control over those dollars. There's no restrictions on how those dollars are spent. So unassigned is really what we want to make sure that we are maintaining that at a level that allows us to pay all of our expenditures. And so it's important to maintain that unassigned fund balance to pay those expenditures. And the board has set a policy of 8%. That 8% means in any given year, we're gonna have enough money in the bank at any given time, 8% to pay what we expect our expenses to be. So in this particular instance, again, if I would just look at FY '25, that unassigned fund balance divided into the expenditures is is the 15.3%. We want that 15.3% to get no lower than 8%. Or we may not have enough money to pay several months. I believe 8% is going to be about three, one, one month or so? Okay, one month of expenditures?
I just was trying to figure out where the other money was coming from. So and then did you answer the question about the health insurance? Did we take that into accommodation that those numbers will be changing? Because I think, I just looked it up, I think it's January 1st, '26 is when all businesses will be required to start offering that. So and I only ask that as we're looking at a projection because won't that change things a little bit? I'm not sure what the percentages are.
Yeah, it's 0.35%. I was reminded of that today, actually, as a matter of fact. And so half of that, obviously, will be part of this next budget because it doesn't start until 2026, because we're on a fiscal year. So we will have to cover half of that within the budget. That would come out of our our general fund as a payroll tax. So it's gonna be a payroll tax like, like social security or Medicare taxes. That's what we predict, expect it to be, but in this case goes to the state of Minnesota instead. We do not yet have that factored into fiscal year '26 budget or going forward. That was something that was frankly just missed. And so we're gonna have to make some adjustments based on that dollar amount, knowing that in FY '26, though, one of the areas I will think, I will tell you is that we're projecting, we're continuing to project a contingency account of about 1%. Meaning we retain 1% in the budget to cover unknowns and unforeseen's. That that number actually has, I believe, is going to be able to be reduced potentially, offsetting some of these, these, that dollar amount that you mentioned that we don't have in here. So I think there's still room in the budget, or the projection rather, in FY '26 to cover it with some, with some movement.
And that would be under the salaries and the wages, then? That's the category that that percentage would change in?
That would be under the, I believe it's the employee benefits. That's gonna be on the employee benefits row.
Oh, okay.
Ready? Oh, Director.
Well, thank you for the information. It's helpful to have a clear projection of kind of how things are trending. My, my, my comments, I guess, are about the expenditure assumptions, assuming 3% growth in salary and wages and 2% in contracted services. I think that those assumptions reflect targets that are appropriate, given what we should reasonably expect in terms of revenue from the state of Minnesota in the next several years, and the commitments that this board has made to the community to maintain high-quality programming and not increase class sizes and so forth. I am concerned that it might not be realistic. And I guess my, my comment to my fellow board members is that in order for us to uphold the commitments that the community made in investing in the school district, I think each of us really needs to be clear-eyed about not growing our ambitions for what the school district could do beyond what is financially prudent and being really disciplined when contract renewals come up and when approvals for expenses come up. Because last, last year, we had a 30% growth in our transportation budget. We, we, there is not room for that kind of thing anytime real soon if we want to maintain our commitment to academics. So thanks for the information, and it's helpful. So thanks.
Two points for the viewing public who may be wondering, well, I thought the board just passed a balanced budget model that was, in theory, designed to, my words, offset, if you will, some of the realities we're currently looking at. And then, in addition to passing the balanced budget model, the community voted for the Ignite Student Learning referendum, approved it soundly. And to, it seems like all that did potentially for some who may be thinking along these lines, it's bought us three years, okay? And and then we find ourselves in, I don't see it the same situation, but in a situation. And and so what can we begin to do? Thank you, Andy, wonderful information. What can we do, though, to, whether it's addressing the fund balance, whether it's addressing the projected expenditures, what what things do we have control over or not in in terms of being forthright to our community? I wouldn't want anyone to think that we somehow didn't, that we hit or withheld and and that this is there all the time. Maybe no one in the community thinks that. But but I, just sitting here, thought it necessary to just raise it as a point of discussion and how we might get ahead of it and ensure that the community continues to feel confident in what we're doing and the direction we're headed in. Is there anything you can perhaps offer?
I can, Director Barlow. That, that precisely the point you've made is why I'm recommending that in the budget parameters we're going to turn to in the next item, you direct us to bring a long-term plan to address those deficits with the budget proposal for next year. So as you said, well in advance of the emergence of those deficits. And so we, we did that three years ago, I think, to good effect. And essentially, I'm suggesting that you should direct and hold me and us accountable for bringing a serious strategy to deal with that. I think that the balanced budget model will help us find efficiencies at both the school and system level that we previously haven't found. And so I think there are some efficiencies as part of the strategy. I think Director Cook's point about our labor contracts and purchased services is well-taken, especially because if I understood the implications of what you're saying fully, Director Cook, we may have to not do some stuff in order to preserve the core academic mission. And so those are some of the trade-offs that we would bring you in the strategy that I'm hoping you will authorize us to do. So I, I'm confident that we can develop that strategy. And thanks to the referendum, we have some time to do it.
Just really quick, I guess, and I'm not sure if this was kind of what Director Barlow was saying, but do we have specific things? Chair Nathan had brought up some items that could potentially be funded by the state that maybe we should be keeping our eye on or, you know, petitioning our local government about? Are there other ideas that we have within this space of ways to increase funding if we do have this projection that we'll be losing money? I guess I've heard a lot of the problems, but do we have any solutions on how, if things remain as projected, where we gonna come up with this additional funding? Maybe in-house, or are we just kinda at the whim of the state? Or do we have other ideas?
We always have, and we will continue to advocate at the state level. And as the Legislative Committee is gonna update us on in a moment, funding is certainly a predominant theme in this proposal for this year. I will say, I was up in the cities on Friday because I'm on the Executive Committee of the Board of the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. And they had legislators, senior committee leaders of both parties. And they both said, there is no new money coming. They were unequivocal. And so I think we need to be quite conservative in what we assume the state would do. That said, you know, things change, elections happen, priorities change. So I think that's no reason for us to be passive. I think your point is very well taken. We, we also need to be able to work with our Rochester delegation on those issues. So I think it's a really critical issue. In terms also of the longer-term financial strategy, one thing that I, I know we, we've learned is that when we do talk about the, the changes we might make to address this issue, it's very important to have done our homework first. And so I won't go further into the kinds of shifts and changes we might, we might make now. But certainly, the strategy that I'm suggesting you direct us to bring you by June would have enough specifics for the board to understand the heart of the strategy. So we will use the next six months to dig in to this reality that Andy has outlined for us tonight and bring you some options. Not for action all at once, because, of course, we build these budgets year by year by year. But I think we've seen the merits of a long-term financial strategy over the last three years. I mean, we really stuck to it. We stuck to the strategy that the board approved in the fall of 2021. And I think we need and can develop a similar strategy that addresses the, the gaps that Andy has outlined for us here, which, again, compared to what a lot of school districts are facing, are not cataclysmic. I don't mean to be dismissive, but they are not, certainly what we might have seen had we not had the authority to renew the 2015 referendum and pass the 2024 referendum. That would be very hard to see us maintaining the academic agenda that Director Cook just spoke about if we had to make those cuts.
All right, we will move on. Our next, which other item is a prep for action parameters for. Our next touched item is a prep for action, parameters for involvement of the 2025-26 budget. And we are scheduled to take action on this at the January 21st regular meeting.
Thank you. We do not have a presentation for you on this because the six points that I'm recommending are outlined in the memo that you have, that was written to the board. They are, first of all, to build the balanced budget model into the comprehensive proposal that we will bring you for action in June. Second, to build the capacity of our school principals to utilize that model, in particular, the increased flexibility they will have with one of the four components of the model. Third, as we talked about tonight, to really link our budget model with our school improvement process for reasons that our chief academic officer, I think, described really well a few moments ago. Fourth, to maintain the commitments of the Ignite Student Learning referendum as we articulated them, including in board action when you voted for the referendum. And thereby avoid increasing class size or closing schools as we also discussed in the referendum. And then finally, to the point touched off by Director Barlow's last comment, to direct us to bring a long-term financial strategy to address the gaps that Andy has just outlined. That we would present to you concurrent with the budget proposal for next year, when we do not face a deficit, but that we certainly need to begin taking action because the longer you defer developing a strategy, the harder it gets.
Director Cook?
I like all of these priorities. I think it makes a lot of sense to me. My main question is whether, in this upcoming budget cycle, there are any urgent facilities needs that ought to be part of our next year's budget planning? I know many of us have heard about, well, a whole constellation of needs that depending on which site you are at the district, will be relatively urgent in some cases. So is that, is that something that is going to be part of the long-term facility maintenance plan? Or is there any aspect of our facility's needs that makes sense to incorporate into the next year's budget?
Well, a couple of things. First, we do have time scheduled with you on June 10th in the study session to actually go through a laundry list of facilities issues and potentially bring a recommendation forward on, to act. I don't see them necessarily being implicated here in the general fund budget that we're talking about. But secondly, as part of just a normal ongoing, how we pay for long-term facilities maintenance, we will be bringing to approximately on March 18th information on the next round of issuing bonds to pay for those projects that are in queue. And so you'll get an update on our long-term facilities work at that point too, briefly.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
For item four, the parameter of integrating all the investments and positions and programs that were included in the 2024 Ignite Student Learning referendum. I know that during the referendum, we also talked about a dashboard that would somehow show exactly where we were spending the money on those. Is that going to come out after the budget is approved?
We would, Chair Nathan, prefer to do that after because then it's actually based on what you actually approve. But I would imagine shortly thereafter.
But when we are approving the budget, will we see where the Ignite Student Learning investments are sort of located?
Yes.
Okay. Director Whitman?
I have a lot of questions, I'm sorry. So I do think they're great ideas, but what I don't particularly know, and maybe somebody else does know, is what can be included in, you know, as we have all these buckets, there's a lot of them. What can this small general fund surplus be spent on? Because I'm sure that they are parameters. So I guess I really can't attest to whether or not these are the best ideas if I don't know what exactly can be included in that money, right?
Yes, and thank you, Director Barlow. This, establishing parameters for the budget is something that I suggested we begin doing when I got here in 2021. And so these are essentially our marching orders from you. And then we will bring you a very specific proposal that outlines the recommendation for expenditures across all of those categories, including what we might recommend doing with that modest surplus that you mentioned. So you will get, starting in May and then ultimately leading up to your vote in June, all of the specifics. And we will track our budget proposal back to these parameters and show you how, I believe, the budget meets these parameters. So we would definitely get there. We haven't developed it at this point. Because we really start our process with these parameters that you set as our governing board.
So right now, there aren't, so we've had this money, but we're trying to create what this money could be used for? Is that where we are with this? Is that?
Well, some of the funds we have, and they're continuing, but most of this is dollars we will get over the course of the next school year. And you're going to approve the budget for how we can spend them.
Okay, so they're not existing parameters?
Right. And there's always some carryover that's not insignificant. But most of this is budgeting the dollars that we're going to receive through the process Andy outlined where the average daily membership drives the revenue. And you are then telling us how we can expend those dollars.
Okay, maybe I, okay, so when I, okay, give me a minute, Charlie. So I know that we have separate buckets, right? So there are certain things that get spent out of one bucket for whatever, transportation, something. So is this, are these supposed to be for items that are not already in a bucket? Or are these are supposed to be for items that we think need more money? Does he understand where I'm headed with this? Or?
I hear you say yeah.
Think I'm understanding.
So like in the budget, we already have, like the balance, like we have, you know, things in each bucket, right? These buckets. So what I'm saying is, this particular money, is this money that can overlap with money that's in other buckets already? Is this for things that need more money that aren't already, you know, don't already have an allocation of where the money is going?
Are you just talking about the surplus dollars that?
Right, so this money, is this just however, are we just whatever?
This is everything. This is all of the resources in the district. And we'll bring you a comprehensive proposal for some funds we have discretion over and flexibility over that we can allocate. And you, that's what you'll vote for. Some things are essentially required expenditures, like for certain special education services. And so this is giving us the broad, as I said, marching orders for essentially all of the funds that are in the school district. And so it will include any new investments we might want to make. It'll also have you authorized the continuing investments that we make every year. And so it's probably the best way I can describe it unless I'm using another device.
We do a new budget every year.
Right.
And the goal, I think, is I tried and maybe didn't do a good enough job in the, is that we bring in, we are projecting a certain amount of revenue. And in a perfect world, we would spend more than that. And if that happened year after year after year, our fund balance, or quote-unquote, our savings account, that I've discussed as well, would not change. But in those years, maybe where we've spent less than we've brought in, then our savings account goes up and we can decide, how do we want to use those dollars? Sometime in the future. They're not part of the budget per se, though. Those are dollars that were part of a previous budget that were either saved or used. So when we start talking about putting the budget together for next year, it's our new money and our new expenses. And if there happens to be anything left at the end of the year between those two amounts, then that would become, be added to our fund balance, which then becomes something that we can, you as a board, can make future determinations about how to spend those dollars. For example, we had money saved over several years in the fund balance. And we used $6.7 million of that this year to pay for some added, the added healthcare, healthcare contributions that the board chose to enact. And so therefore, that, we are projecting to spend $6.7 million more. And the board has agreed to use fund balance or savings account money essentially to pay for that. So I don't know if that helped at all?
I think I got it. Y'all, you gotta, you gotta give me a minute. I've been losing sleep. I have a lot of new small children at my home that I'm fostering. But I was just trying to get, so these are the parameters for the entire budget and how we move forward. I just think my brain was getting stuck somewhere, but I'm catching up. Just talk to me nice. I'm getting there.
Good questions. All right, any other comments, board members, on this agenda item? We will be talking about it a lot going forward. Our next item, prep for action, is priorities for the 2025 legislative session, which are, we are also scheduled to take action at the January 21st meeting. Would someone from the Legislative Committee like to take the lead on this?
I think you can take the lead on it, but I would ask Director Workman to jump in because I might need some help, given how we put this together this year. And what you have before you is a document that basically Director Workman and I put together to summarize information that we had from various sources. Some of them were the delegate assembly that she and I attended in December. Some of these come from the MSBA legislative priorities. Some of them, which is the Minnesota State School Board Association. Some come from AMSD, which is, somebody might need to help me with there, the Association of Metro School Districts. And some come from the Superintendent Association, that you're going to have to help me with that one, it's late. So Director Workman and I looked at all of these different legislative priorities and put our thoughts together as to how to present these here to determine what would be most impactful for Rochester Public Schools and our priorities to discuss with our local legislators for this current legislative session. And one of the thoughts we put together is that, we broke these into categories this year, that I think I borrowed this from the MSBA legislative priorities, that there are some that refer to governance, which is basically the work of the board and how we operate. The next is based on funding, which is kind of self-explanatory. And then student-centered learning are things that relate to our students and how we approach policies that directly impact our students. And then there's a fourth category of kind of a mash-mash of different things that we also gleaned from these different organizations. But I would, Director Workman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we looked at the governance, the funding, and the student-centered learning as probably our stronger priorities. Some of these have been either carried over or considered in prior years. But the additional priorities are things that we also wanted the board to be aware of so that if there's things from that list that you really want us to prioritize with our discussions, with our legislators, that we could do that as well. I also want to talk a little bit about process, that once the board takes action on the final list of these priorities on the January 21st meeting, the next step then would be for the Legislative Committee and Director Cook, I would definitely plan to include you on this as well, as a new member of the committee, to set up a schedule to discuss these priorities with our local legislators. We've done that by Zoom most recently, but it might make sense actually this year, perhaps, to consider an in-person meeting. The challenge with that is that a lot of them are obviously extremely busy during session and getting them all together in one room might be a challenge. So that's one of the reasons we've looked at electronic ways to do that as well, or some combination of the two. So I guess, I haven't really thought too much about how to go through this list other than, you know, just kind of bullet point by bullet point. I would remind the board that the data request, the first one under governance is something that Director Workman and I actually worked with at some other districts to present at the delegate assembly. We worked the language a little bit to combine some concepts that came through from that process. But the general concept of modifying the Government Data Practices Act was something that the delegate assembly, which is a group of school board members that come to that body in December to help the MSBA develop their legislative committee. This is very well received by the delegate assembly and passed unanimously. And also is something that is, that mentioned in all of these different organizations, legislative priorities in, you know, somewhat different forms, but kind of the main concept to amend that Data Practices Act. We've also gotten input that some other local government units might want to do the same. So it seems like that's something that's kind of bubbled up to be a priority in terms of the legislature.
Okay, so I'll jump in just a little bit.
Sure.
I remember your admonition is to strongly, that when everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. So in previous years-
And I borrowed that from Dr. Bacall, that wasn't me, that was it.
Yeah, that's right. I loved it, yeah. Doesn't make it any less true.
So what we've done in previous years have come to you with a specific recommendation of three or four priorities that we've already worked out.
And then you've approved it. Obviously, we can't approve all of this because then nothing is a priority. So I'd like to, you know, just let you know that the process this year is a little bit different in terms of involving the entire board and members of the cabinet in deciding, you know, what is it we really need to push forward? The board did approve on September 24th, 2024, that the first thing on the data requests. And the language from the beginning of that up until B, letter B, is the exact same language that you approved back in September. And then as Karen mentioned, with these additional concepts here.
So I, personally, I think this is one that since our other professional organizations have in their legislative platform, and inasmuch as the delegate assembly did unanimously approve this, which was a little bit of a surprise. I'm not sure what I was expecting, but it wasn't that. That I feel pretty strongly that we need to have this as one of our priorities. However, of course, the rest of the board may agree or not to this.
And I would add to that, too, that I think it's come up in a lot of different contexts. And also, I think this is something that our legislative body might need some education about why it's so important. You know, they may look at this as, oh, this is just some boring thing, but the financial impact that it has, not only in our district, but the district statewide, is pretty impactful and growing. Until we have that discussion, I'm not sure that people would have this on their radar. As I was thinking about how to present this, in general, going back to Director Workman's comments, if we had more time, I think we could do those sheets with the dots, but we don't have that available to us tonight because of how we brought this to the board. That might have been a good way to do this. But if you want to weigh in on things as we go along, that either questions or expression of your interest in these priorities, I think that would be helpful. The other thing I did want to point out is, on this two-page list, Director Workman had the good idea to indicate with stars or asterisks the things that we can do that don't require the additional funds. Going back to Dr. Bacall's discussion about the AMSD presentation last week that I did attend remotely, the lack of new money. And also thinking, I'm listening to news a little bit today about how our legislative session has launched today, is probably not super, a really good day to be having this discussion, but here we are. So the other piece of the governance is, over periods of time, there are a lot of unfunded mandates that legislature passes and doesn't attach funds to them. But that is essentially probably what a lot of leads us to the budget discussions we were having today as well. In terms of funding, I believe that the first bullet point, the increase in the general education formula by 3% for fiscal year '26 and '27 to cover the inflationary shortfalls. This seems to be something that we've carried over from year to year, but it continues to be on the radar of, this is one way to, and Mr. Carlson, jump in if you want, to reasonably increase our revenue in a way that would make sense from the legislative level if we're going to look at increasing funding needs, this is the way to do it. So that's why that continues to be on our radar and our priorities. Director Workman, do you want to talk about the increased local optional revenue? I don't, yes, I don't quite have a handle on that.
Yeah, I would be, I would be happy to talk about that. So the local option revenue, and I did see it ch- So the local option revenue, and I did see a chart somewhere in all of this material that showed where we were back in 2014, where the it was at $424 back in 2014 or 2015. But actually, a year or two before that, it was at $212 for Rochester and the rest of outstate Minnesota and $424 for the metro area. Yep. And so at that particular delegate assembly meeting, I did bring up this inequity. And then the state said, okay, everybody gets $424. But that's kind of been where we stuck, were stuck for a couple of years. Then it was increased to $724, and then with the inflationary aspect, since then, it would be at $974 to have, to keep up with inflation. I figured for our district, that would generate roughly $4.3 million, $4 million, somewhere in there, which would help. And this is a item that the school board votes on. We can either choose to do it or choose not to do it. I think this is one thing that is good for districts to be able to have that local control over how much they can actually levy additional to, you know, things like referenda. So I'm in favor of doing that? No, let me back up and clarify that. I think that it would be great if the legislature would vote to do this. And then we as a board at some point would decide whether or not it was appropriate for us to increase that particular funding from $724, where it is now to $974, which would obviously be an increase in taxes, which might not be the wisest thing to do after we've just passed a rather large referendum, but certainly for future years. Did that help?
I think it does, and I think that providing some context to that, it requires legislative action at the state.
Yes.
But it's not state money, it would give us the authority
Authority to levy it.
At even, you know, now or sometime in the future to access this additional local revenue to assist with the budget discussions we were having tonight. Does that make sense?
And then we've talked, we've talked about reducing or eliminating the cross subsidies for English learner programming and special ed, and this has been on the list forever and ever and ever. And I think that things, even when the legislature says no more money, we still need to keep this on their radar so that they don't come back and say, well, you didn't say this year that you needed more funding to help cover or completely cover the cross subsidy. So it's one of these, the gift that keeps on giving.
And I think the one change that I saw in the discussions in the various documents this year is that sometimes it just says eliminate. I like the idea of adding the reduce or to kind of chip away at this over time, again, keeping it on the radar.
Like we, like the legislature did for last year and then next year.
In the last legislative session, there were bills in both chambers to completely eliminate the special education cross subsidy. And then eventually that resulted in reducing or increasing cross subsidy aid, which reduces the cross subsidy from 6.43% of a district's cross subsidy to 44%, and then eventually in 2027, bring it to 50%. I, I mean, I totally agree that this doesn't seem like the year where it's likely to happen, but it's sort of a long-term campaign where you build this support year to year to year. I think we should push hard, as hard as we think we can, for eliminating the special education cross subsidy. That is the single biggest thing for our district and probably every district in the state, if I had to guess, on enabling school districts to meet the needs of every single student in their district, both those that are served by IEPs and those that are not. For our district, even at the 44% level, it's still $18 million that we are allocating from the general fund to fund necessary and required special education services. We could make very good use of that $18 million to provide enriching services for all of our students. So I, I think that should be a really high priority and we should push hard.
And the same thing for the English language learners, which is about $3.8 million, according to what you said earlier. That sounds about right? Any more board discussion or ideas on the cross subsidies for English learner programming and special ed?
Madam Chair, if I may, so
I'm not chair, but that's fine. Director Barla.
So thank you, Director Workman. So if we do have additional questions, we can perhaps forward them to you versus trying to
We're not scheduled to take action until next.
Right, right, right.
And that crossed my mind as I was sitting here as well, in terms of we have the ability to ask questions about the board agenda, maybe that's the place to
To put that into, your questions into assembly, like we do for other urgent items.
Right. The Q and A document.
Q and A comes out tomorrow for the January 21st meeting, so there will be a place
Yeah, I'm not saying unnecessarily, well, but I was just giving consideration for tonight's.
The next bullet point is about basically the modifications to the compensatory funding formula now that we have the the free meals for students, the free and reduced lunch forms aren't as prolific as they used to be. So really rethinking that whole funding formula and how to have some different type of criteria for better identifying student needs for services. Until we can come up with that, the idea would be to, if I understand things right, use the current formula until there's a better system. Is that how?
Or at least not negatively impact our
Right, the whole harmless. But I think the general idea is what I keep coming back to and thinking about this topic is we need to be better, better system at some point. We just need to develop that with the assistance of the legislature. The next three topics actually are things we had not been considering on prior years legislative priorities. But one of the reasons I included them is I do think that RPS is looking at reconsidering how we're using our funds for career and technical funding and education for students. And it seemed like a good topic to include, to talk to our legislators about, so that they can think about how we are looking at those areas of our programming and wanting to increase the funding if they're able to assist us with that. The next topic, disparity, transportation funding increase is something that Director Workman and I learned about at the delegate assembly that it wasn't even something that I had even heard about before, so it was very educational to learn about that and then dialogue with Mr. Carlson about this. But basically, the idea is that because we are a big geographic district, we do receive some funding to assist us with our transportation costs. The idea is that we currently get, and you can explain how the formula works, but we get 35% of reimbursement in doubling that to 70% would assist RPS in offsetting those transportation costs because of the size of the district. Do you want to talk a little bit about how that, how that works?
Within the general education formula, they assume about 4.66% of what you're getting paid on general education aid should be covering your transportation. When we run above that, our transportation spending on regular education, transportation is running slightly ahead of that. And so they, they acknowledge that some of the districts like us, Forest Lake, Middletown, really large and geographic area. And so they're trying to pay us back a little bit more for that. And right now, they're paying 35% of what that excess cost is. So it's just proposing doubling that payment.
And when you talk about general education, that's for our general routes, not like the special
Special ed routes are reimbursed right now about 80% of what they cost through the cross subsidies. There's, there's a gap there, but if that gets addressed through the special ed cross
And then finally, I added the final bullet point, the fund early childhood transportation costs, because I think it's a conversation to start with our legislators. I don't see that at all happening this year. But I think it's something that it really impedes our budget to a great extent about being able to serve those youngest learners. And I want to start that discussion of if there's ways to assist us with that at the legislative level, this may be one thing to consider. Moving on to the student-centered learning, there has been discussion about
I gotta quit. I'm sorry, the, and I'm just, so I'm clear with the free and reduced lunch issue? Is it just because we don't have students completing the form anymore because we have free and reduced lunch? Is that a concern?
Right, so the idea is to stop using that form and shifting it to a different model to create the formula for that.
So it used to be, it used to be that if they wanted assistance with lunch or breakfast or whatever, they had to fill out a form.
Yes.
But now they don't have to fill out the form because the state has picked up the entire cost of it.
You know, no, I'm aware of that, but what I'm saying is that if, I mean, the form would, the information that we need to collect would be the same. And I'm sorry, maybe I may be overly simplistic, but what I was saying is, is this not a simple fix? Like we just are changing the name of the form because the, well, what I understand as a parent, the reasoning behind it would be for, you know, special activities, sports, plays, this type of thing. It also identifies so that children can have a reduction on those other things. And if parents are not completing it because it says free and reduced lunch, is this just not a simple fix of just either adding to the existing title so that parents know why they need to complete it? You know, and I'm just trying to think of, of things we can do now to kind of ship, since we, we do need those forms. I just don't know.
Actually, I get what you're saying.
System-wise, if that's possible, because we, we need to collect the same information. And I think, as, as I'm aware, since the state is picking it up, parents are getting the form and saying, well, I don't need to complete this because you already are paying for lunch. So there's a misunderstanding of why they need to complete it.
You can do some parent education around it being it's really about educational benefits. But I think there's still, a lot of those educational benefits, parents are more, more likely to complete it when kids are older than when kids are younger, because we don't have like extracurricular activities as much. I mean, you do, I think, maybe with the community ed. It's just having been in the, in the younger buildings, without having it tied to lunch and breakfast, you lose a lot of it. It, there's just a lot more legwork that has to be done. Parents will fill it out, you can, you can track them down and get them to fill it out, but it's just a lot more legwork that has to happen on the schools. And so if there's another way to get the information or get access, like, just so that the schools aren't held, so they don't lose funding, I think that's
Right, because I think when you get that packet in the beginning, right, like, if it, I think that's, that's the stop, right? Is because it says free and reduced lunch. That's why I don't know if, if it's just the simplicity of even in the titling of the form, you know, because parents just fill out what you tell them to fill out. So if, you know, I mean, I know myself as a parent, I just filled it out because I had kids. I don't, I mean, there are many years I didn't even qualify, but you get the packet, oh, maybe they'll qualify. So maybe it's just a matter of, because I think we talk parent education now, again, we're talking about community engagement and all these other things, which is fine. But I'm just thinking, can we simplify the process even more than that and just either add to the title of that form so that may, and, and I mean, it may work, it may not. But I'm just thinking, if we already have the form, we already have that system, and I know we need to change it. Until we get to that point, is there something more simplistic that we can do to continue collecting the data as we always have?
Well, as I understand it, clarify for me too. It's not our form, it's, it's a federal form.
Oh, okay.
And the state uses the form to do the calculation for the compensatory money. So even if we were to come up with our own form for the educational benefits that we might give as a district decrease on sports fees or subsidies for community education, the state and the feds are still using their form to calculate our compensatory money.
No, no, but I'm just saying, the, the concern is the parents not filling it out, right? So my thought is, do we just
It's not really that, I don't think.
No. Yeah, it, it's more about replacing that form with a different process. So asking the legislature to say, don't use that form anymore to determine the compensatory aid, create a whole new system. But until we do that, we're gonna rely on the old system, but not require people to do the forms. But I've also learned through the process, there's other ways to identify that population. Some of them are through, it's called like direct, is there other word? Direct certified, that accessing different perhaps community benefits that people are getting, like public assistance, accessing that information so they don't have to do the form. There's a different way to get the same information. The other piece though, is that there's better ways to identify what students need those services, what students and families need those services. We need a better way to, we need to create a better system to capture who those people are.
And I agree, I was just saying, I just know that takes time. I was just trying to think of what can we do to utilize what we currently have, even though it may not be the best system, so that we're still getting that data and we, you know, as the system changes, I guess my concern is that gap, right? Because we have an old form that we're all saying is not very effective right now because it's not being utilized. We know we need a new system, but if this takes two years, what, what's happening in the interim, right? Because even if, you know, even when, when things pass, and I could be wrong, it doesn't go into effect immediately, right? There's still, even if the legislation says, yes, we agree, and we're gonna change this, it could still be implemented in 2028. So what happens in that time? So I was just, I agree.
That's the purpose of the way this is worded, is don't let those financial benefits, don't let the district lose out on those benefits during this transition time.
Okay, I'm just, sorry, I don't understand, thank you.
Yeah, but good questions. So in terms of the student-centered, that looking at ways to assess our students, I think we've had earlier discussions in other meetings about the value of MCA exams and transitioning that instead to the ACT to better align with career and college readiness, is a concept that, I think that was, the first time I did hear that was at the MSBA delegate assembly. This is kind of percolating up to something that might get the legislators' attention, particularly and I guess there is a little bit of a question of whether there would be financial impact of this or not.
The other thing I think about, and Superintendent, I'll invite you to jump in, on the, that the ACT actually lines up better with what our outcomes that we are supposed to have from the state, as opposed to the MCA, which don't seem to be quite as well-aligned. And so you're not really getting as clear a picture from the MCAs as you are from the ACT. And I believe we pay for all of our students to take the ACT now, is that correct?
If they, if they take it.
If they take it, if they take it, it's not required.
But then, Dr. Bacall, I think with you that pointed out though, the issue of science.
The, the ACT doesn't, doesn't assess science, so we'd have to figure out a different way to do that.
No, there is a science, there is a science assessment, but it often is not included in the states that have adopted ACT or SAT. They usually just tie their accountability system to reading and math. But it could, you know, I think this is a great idea, and I, I hope the legislature pays attention to it. The big argument against it is gonna be that the ACT is not designed to measure Minnesota's standards specifically. In my view, there is enough overlap between Minnesota's standards and what the ACT is built to merit this change. So I hope it gets some attention. I know there'll be opposition from within MDE to it, but I think it's a great idea.
So, and I mean, there is a potential cost savings maybe to the state because the MCAs aren't free to administer, right? Or to develop?
Potentially, the MCA test development happens only every year when you do, which is just about now, you do new test development. And then you kind of just run them, and actually, the MCAs are a relatively cheap test, which is part of the problem, as standardized tests go. So I would, I think this is an educational argument as opposed to a financial one. There might be some savings to it, but
I actually did come up with my own question as I was thinking about putting this on this document. If I understand things right, the MCAs are tested periodically through a student's time in RPS, but ACT is just 11th grade? So how does, how do those match up?
Yet, we would only give one high school test if this was adopted, presumably, which does
But we would use other assessments for other purposes.
We would still give fast bridge for, but that's a local determination. ACT used to have this really great aligned suite of assessments that were predictive of the ACT. The explore test and the plan test in eighth grade and 10th grade, and they moved away from it. But you, that was really a powerful but very expensive system, and you had to buy it from ACT, of course. But now it's just that, it's the, the summative test is what they have built now, their whole system. But they have tons of resources for curriculum and instruction tied to the exam, so But they have tons of resources for curriculum and instruction tied to the exam, so I think it's a great idea.
I think the thing that you just brought up, in terms of the MCAs being multiple times in high school and the ACT being one, is that that time away from instruction to accommodate the multiple times we give the MCAs. And frankly, the value of the timing of taking the MCAs versus when students receive the results that aren't tied to course selection or college or career planning where the ACT, the suite of resources absolutely feeds into all of our college and career planning efforts.
The other thing from the student's perspective is I think they would, are more likely to take the ACT test more seriously than they do the MCAs.
And I kind of looked at this too in a bigger picture of avoiding the criticism of teaching to the test, that we can teach for assessment and helping our students rather than a standardized test that has to be done on a regular basis.
And I just want to say, the MCAs in high school, the reading is done in tenth grade and the math is done in eleven. They don't take like the same test multiple times in high school.
So I guess my question surrounding that is, so I take, I'm from the East Coast, I took the SATs, because that's what's popular there. When I moved here, I took the ACTs. I will say, out of both school systems, I had to do additional studying and went through additional prep. So how would that change our current curriculums that we have set up? And I'm just, I've been a student, high school student, a little while, but would that, how would that impact the curriculum? Because even my kids who took ACTs recently, you know, there's a whole separate prep process for that, that includes, you know, the studying that they're doing. So if we would be testing the students, are we going to be adjusting the curriculum so that they're able to pass it? Because depending, the, I'm assuming most people now have taken it, it's a little different than just what you just, you know, than the MCA. So how would that, I see the value, right? But then how does that affect the high school curriculum? Because we don't want to set kids up for failure, right? So we, if our curriculum is set to get them prepared for the MCAs, does this mean that we'll also have to make a structural change so that the children are prepared to take the ACT? Or are we going to be adding an additional ACT prep course? And I could be wrong in this, but I mean, I did it with all my kids, I did it myself, we all did the ACT prep course. My kids were very bright and my kids were struggling, I mean, one in the same, just because that test is set up a little differently. So I just don't know if that adds additional things to our.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great point. In statute and just in theory, it shouldn't be the test that drives the curriculum, it should be the standards. So Minnesota has, in theory, but oftentimes people pay attention to the test. So the test should measure the standards and the curriculum should teach the standards. And that's where, as I mentioned, I think the biggest pushback to this is going to come from people who say the MCAs are designed to measure Minnesota's standards, which means that the test is aligned with what people are expected to teach with curriculum. And then some will say ACT is designed on the knowledge and skills that you need to succeed in first-year coursework at a four-year college or university. That's what the ACT is designed. So then there's a separate question about kids who don't want to go to a four-year college. And so that will be the biggest counterargument to this, because you're right, we would need to account for what kids are being tested on, and if there was big discrepancies between what the ACT measures and our state standards, that's where the problem would lie. I think that this will push that useful discussion at the state level, because there's nothing magic about Minnesota's standards. You could, you could re-revise the standards. Right now, the standards are in law, and they're revised about every ten years, and that's what we're expected to teach. And this could create a tension between some of those standards. It's not gigantic, they're broadly aligned.
And they've done this in eight states already, where they have, part of the process is that they do a mapping of the ACT content to the state standards. And they have shown that without changing the ACT, that it does cover the state standards in every state that they've done. And we are, there are already two districts that have also done that mapping in Minnesota to start the mapping to the state standards, and they're already showing that it does cover the majority of the state standards. So it's not that, it's such a tool that's, as you said, it's so out of compliance with the standards that the curriculum would have to change.
I just ask, because like I said, a lot of people do that prep course. And I mean, it wasn't super intense, but there were things that, I mean, myself, my kids, we all had to re-review in order to prepare for that test. And a lot of it was just because it wasn't fresh information, there are areas in the ACT that, you know, you may have done in maybe eighth grade, you just had to kind of brush up on some things. So that's why I ask, will they, if we switch to it, what will be the plan to preparing kids? I don't think that it's not, you know, just like with any test, if you test any of us right now on ACT, we might not do that good without the prep course. So I'm just saying, how would we prepare so that we don't set our system up for failure, right? Because if we're not preparing our kids to take that particular test, how it's formulated, there may be.
What sort of preparation do you give MCAs?
We don't. So right now, we certainly urge our schools to be paying attention to what the MCAs measure, but we don't do test prep for the MCAs. We, the idea of creating a test prep for the ACT, because it does matter to kids who want to go into college, is maybe something we should consider separate from this. Right now, it's usually fee-based, people pay for their own, we don't offer it directly. So that's an interesting idea, and we would be getting into the test prep business if we did that, because right now, it's not something that we do. And if this change happened, that would be an interesting possibility to have to think about.
It would be interesting what resources we could get the state to provide too for that.
Well, yeah, but they don't provide much for the MCA, so it would be a, that's not true, there are some things that they provide.
Well, as she said, the MCA is a different animal, though, right? Because you're taking the English in one year, you're taking the math in another year, and it's still not the same setup as, you know, the ACT where you're sitting there for two and a half hours going through every thing you've learned. I mean, I think there's just, there's some things I think need to be really thought through and considered, because I think it's a great idea to do, but we don't want to see our numbers plummet either, right? We don't want to go from, you know, because we're trying to get rid of these achievement gaps, so where we now create a new gap because we have a whole different testing structure that our students are not prepared to do.
I can just, in a foreshadowing of what we talked about at the beginning of this meeting, when we were all young, long ago, that I will be recommending to you that RPS make the ACT for sure in reading and math, well, it's reading and English and math, that we make it our success measure at the high school level locally. So I know I'll recommend that to you as opposed to the MCA. We would still have to give the MCA unless this proposal happens, but I think it is a much more useful goal for us to focus on the ACT at the high school level. So that'll be coming this spring when we bring you that recommendation, teaser there.
Oh, yay. Reason to stay tuned. Any other questions about that one? Otherwise, I'll move on to the next one, broadening the definition of instructional hours to allow students to earn credit for learning wherever it occurs. The basic idea about this is that if students are doing unique programs where they might get mentoring or other types of instruction to be able to allow them to use that as credit so that they can progress in their studies, whether they're sitting in seats or not, is kind of the idea. So the next section is the additional priorities for consideration. Director Murman, do you want to talk about the, I did not understand the school calendar part.
I think the, allow school boards to establish a school calendar. Right now, we are legally required to start after Labor Day unless we have $400,000 or more of construction projects for the summer interim, did I get that right?
Anywhere, for, anytime, we have 400 grand of construction going on.
Right. It allows us to set the calendar. I don't want to say this too loud, but that $400,000 amount has been in place for a very long time, we'd like to leave it there. There's been some discussion, you know, from some communities or some districts that if we're allowed to set our own calendar, it's going to really mess with tourism and other things where they rely on maybe teens to, you know, come in and help with that. Or if school starts too early, then that's lopping off a couple of weeks in the summer when people would be traveling, you know, doing some of these touristy kinds of things. So there are, you know, pros and cons to that. At this point, it doesn't affect us because we do have $400,000 worth of construction. Have any?
And I guess the way I look at the first three of these additional priorities is, I look at kind of things to modernize the process, that this isn't a consideration for us, and I would expect a lot of districts, because they probably are in the same situation as us, is having that additional, the $400,000 in construction. The next one, eliminating all state requirements related to notice of remote school board meeting participation. I think this is just recognizing that people's lives may require remote attendance on occasion, and the hoops that people have to jump through to accomplish that seems really outdated.
I think, you know, the experience that we had with virtual meetings during COVID has really, really changed that a lot in that we know how to do virtual meetings. And, you know, if I'm, if I get sick on Sunday and I think I shouldn't be at the school board meeting on Tuesday, but I'd still like to participate, I can't because I haven't given the three days notice of, you know, where else I might be to participate in the school.
And some of it.
And some of it was too, like you had to, Kathy, I know you're pretty familiar with this because you've traveled a lot, but you are required to say exactly where you are, you have to give a public address so that if people, you know, if I'm in California somewhere, so that people who are in California, if they want to see that I'm attending this meeting, they need to know exactly where I am, which seems to me to not make a whole lot of sense, but these rules were from an earlier time.
And some of the other organizations had different aspects of these, either eliminating the three-day notice or eliminating the address located, just added, eliminate all those requirements, they're outdated. And similar to the next one, the, this again, doesn't necessarily impact RPS, but allowing school districts to publish their official proceedings on the district website rather than a newspaper. Some of the communities are losing their newspapers, so they're having to publish in larger publications that are more expensive and not as related to their communities. So it seems like website, again, with modern technology, is perhaps the best way to publish their official proceedings. The next three or four here are about changes the legislature has made that impact our bottom line. So things like the unemployment insurance and paid leave programs, the state passed those changes to law but did not provide funding to them. If they provide funding, it would allow us to do that with, in a more cost-effective way. Providing additional training for the READ Act implementation to train, training and curriculum for the successful implementation. Director Kell, do you want to talk about that locally? How that impacts us? I don't know if it's an RPS or it's a bigger state issue.
Just that we've, we have prioritized the literacy strategy, and so we reserved a large share of the last part of our COVID funding for it, and then we have maximized district dollars. And so unlike some districts, we're covering the cost at present, but we know it's actually a multi-year strategy, and there's no new state money forthcoming. And so we have been able to resource this transition in the first phase, but continued state funding would be very beneficial if it was forthcoming. Again, as we keep saying, the prospect of that is not high, given the state budget, but if you don't ask, that also sends a message.
Right. But also related to our earlier budget discussion, we used our funds to fund this rather than other priorities.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's perhaps, you know, why we're having some of the discussions we are tonight. The next item is strengthening the program known as Grow Your Own and Teacher Apprenticeship Programs to recruit and train teachers of color and teachers in shortage areas. I definitely agree that this is something to keep on the radar. The question is, should it be a priority for this year? And then finally, repeal the requirements to negotiate e-learning days, student testing, and student-to-staff ratios. Director Murman, I think you might know more about this one than I do.
I was going to say, don't count on it. I mean, we don't have e-learning days, correct? Where, like, if there's a snow day, it's a snow day, we don't require students to virtually be in school that day for any number of logistical reasons, such as, do they have the materials at home that they would need to do that?
We don't, but by, because of state statute, we had to talk about it in negotiations, and we agreed with our union locally not to do, we agreed on the state test, student testing, you know, issue as well, but it was required to be in negotiations. The student-to-staff ratio piece is obviously a more complex and difficult one, that we don't consider a subject of negotiation, but we had to talk about it because of this legislation. Our perspective really was, that's an inherent managerial right, not something that's contractual. But the legislation is awkward in that it doesn't force us to agree, but you have to negotiate it, you have to include it in the negotiation. So I think we have a really good relationship with Rochester Education Association, so it didn't divert us from reaching a good settlement. In places where that's not the case, you can have, these become roadblocks to getting a deal done, because they're saying, wait, we're supposed to agree to this. Well, no, you're just supposed to make sure it comes up in negotiation.
I did not understand that distinction, so that's super helpful. So unless there are other questions, I think the process we talked about earlier about asking questions through the Q and A for next week's meeting, and we can have more discussion next week.
Great. So under other business, our annual board calendar draft update, are there any items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on the future board meeting agenda? Hearing none, our upcoming board meeting dates are January 21st at 5:30, a regular meeting; February 18th at 5:30, a special session on field trip fees within a regular board meeting immediately following; March 4th, 5:30, a regular board meeting; and March 18th, 5:30, a regular board meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:35 PM.